Calling the Sonora City Council Regular Meeting to order Monday, November 7, 2022 at about 5:00 PM sharp. And it's been so long that I've been here, I don't remember everything that's read off. So this meeting will be held in accordance with Government Code Section 52953, Bracket E, and the City of Sonora City Council Resolution 1017-2022-A. This meeting is--can we turn that down just a little bit? It's kind of scaring me. Just, thank you. And so this meeting is physically open to the public or members of the public, and they may participate in the meeting via video conferencing at the adjoined link. And let us then have our Pledge of Allegiance. Councilwoman Cruz.
Praise be.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Madam Clerk, may we have the roll call, please?
Mayor Plummer.
Here.
Mayor Protem Sagerstrom.
Here.
Councilmember Cruz.
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins is absent, and Councilmember Merrill.
Here.
Thank you. And the clerks report on the agenda posting.
At 3:05 PM on the third day of November 2022, the agenda for the City of Sonora Council meeting scheduled for today's date was posted in the window of City Hall for public view.
Thank you. So we are honored with two presentations. The first, from Visit Toolumee County Annual Report Presentation. And is that including the Augustine Agency? Or is that in another--okay, great, thank you. Well gracious, pictures and everything. I've been leading a very simple life. Anywhere that you are comfortable.
Okay. Well, it's been a few years, Mayor, and thank you so much for allowing us this time to gather for this view what we have been working on, what we've been working on. We have a lot to tell you about, but we're going to kind of do some of the highlights. We probably talked about a month ago, there's a picture by Steve and all of this. We won't go through all that tonight because there's like a couple of highlights. And of course, you're welcoming us to the panel. So first off, I wanted to just let you know, four board of directors who are particularly one of 20 people here, and you might notice that for more than a week and a month, you are used to be here in our Facebook pages. And to be able to share our board, I also wanted to point out, in the audience, that we also did, it's our team. We have Kate Kirkland, Jen Loken, Lily Fulton, and Rose Mear. And then obviously, we were working with, but it's kind of like, you know, we work very closely. I'm going to jump right into some of the tourism trends. In fact, there's a really simple slide that kind of really illustrates the self-keeping of the city as well as how it's possible to live.
Three, or I'm sorry, the top two stayed the same of Texas and Florida. And then we see that New York kind of dropped off, and Washington, Nevada, and then Arizona was added to that list. I just want to touch on some of the partnerships that we have and some of the programs we have with the community, and also stewardship and sustainability. We have a lot of partnerships, and we just wanted to touch on these four that are real big ones for us. The partnerships that we do, they really help us to leverage our funding. So we buy into a lot of co-ops where there might be a match for that program. And it helps us to just elevate Toolumee County in ways that we otherwise might not be able to. Brand USA is that first one there. And through Brand USA, we're able to do a lot of different programs, and those reach multiple countries. So it's very internationally based. And then with Visit California, while we do have some international co-ops through them, we do a lot of things like the What's New that we submit, and then they send that out to all of their media and their leads. We have the California Visitors Guide we partake in. And then California's High Sierra and the Gold Country are both regional marketing groups designated by Visit California. So we participate in both of those as well, since Toolumee County definitely falls into the High Sierra and into the Gold Country. And with the High Sierra, we do, we have some French representation there. So that's a way that we get into the French market, which is really cool, because we often hear about people in our hotels seeing the French coming in, and how did they get here? And so we like to tell them we do have these co-ops that we do. Katie will get more into that in a little bit. And then with the Gold Country Visitors Association, we have a pretty active social media presence on there. I'm currently and have been probably for, I don't know, eight years, been the president of that organization. And that is nine countries up and down Highway 49 that participate in that one. And then we have our Community Investment Program, and this is something that we've always done, but it was not really organized to the extent that it is now. And this is where we take some of our funds and we support local events that support tourism, that support bringing people in into the community. And so it might be helping them out with their marketing, or it might just be a sponsorship. And we also support destination development projects. And a really great example of that is like trail building. It's like the Groveland Trailheads on here, you can see, is one that we support quite a bit. And what's really cool is that this year, for the first time, we have, we are running this program through the Sonora Area Foundation. And just as an example, one of the reasons we did that was because the Sonora Area Foundation has opportunities for matching funds. And so with the Groveland Trailheads, for example, they applied for some funds, and we awarded them with $5,000, and it was matched. So they got $10,000 for that, which was really cool. And of course, they're really excited about that. They're trying to finish some of their trails. So if you know of groups that are looking for things like this, destination development, please let us know. Stewardship and sustainability has really come front and center for us. It started a while back when we would get a lot of calls from people, or you see those comments on social media about why are we inviting these people that are coming up and trashing our forests and leaving their sleds and these things? So we started the Toolumee County Is Too Cold to Trash campaign. And that was just like really trying to motivate people to just clean up after themselves and think twice before you're throwing stuff on the ground or leaving your trash behind. This year, we've had cleanup days at Pine Crest Lake, and we also did facelift at Local at Hetch Hetchy in Groveland, and that was in conjunction with the Yosemite Facelift Day. And we have billboards. This is an example in the lower left there of a billboard that we have in Manteca. Venture Like a Local, thank you for traveling responsibly. Again, a reminder, like, thank you, we appreciate that you're traveling responsibly and cleaning up after yourself. We have this messaging, and it goes throughout our marketing. It's in our travel guides, we have blogs about it, and it's just anywhere we can put that, just as that reminder for people. We also, this last year, did a wildfire infographic, is there on the far right. And this has been really well received by a lot of businesses in our community. Even in Yosemite, the fire chief there, she let me know that it was just a great piece that she wanted to share out as well. And it's just, again, reminding people to check those chains when you're pulling a trailer, which so many people do up here, that we're pulling trailers all over the place. Just look for those chains and make sure that they're up and not hitting the ground. Cigarettes, obviously, put them out, put them in the right place, all that good stuff. And then we are also working with Leave No Trace, and more to come on that. Now we're going to get into the marketing marketing, and I'm just going to touch on the social media just a little bit, just want to give you some examples of some of the social media we've done. And these are all, does this look familiar to you? These are just some of the posts around Sonora. And we also use a program called CrowdRiff, which gives us user-generated content where we can reuse posts that people that are visiting or residents, they're taking these photos, we can repost them. And it's really great, because it's very authentic, I think, that way. And of course, the red church there, anytime you have the red church on anything, the interactions and everything just skyrocket. So, very cool. Just a little bit more about our digital content. We do have a website right now that is under a big refresh, but we have a lot of blogs on that website, 18 new and updated blogs. We share those out all over the place as well, social media, we share those with Visit California. We have an organic consumer email that we send out. This is one that people subscribe to. We have about 17,000 subscribers. The open rate is 29.7%, and industry average is 20. So that's great, and the average clicks are 1.2%. We also have a paid consumer email, and about 6,100 of those go out, and that's going to be to targeted audiences that aren't necessarily signing up with us, but it's, they're targeted and just getting new people learning about Toolumee County. And with that, I am going to turn over the more, she's going to start with traditional advertising, but Katie Kirkland, our Director of Sales and Marketing. Awesome, thank you, Lisa. Perfect, thank you. So Visit Toolumee County ran several print ads statewide, national publications. Many of these ads a lot of times come with added values, such as banner ads or like editorials, so we get a full page ad and then a full page of like editorial content as well. Just to call out some of these that are more, like most of the renowned travel publications, Conde Nast Traveler has a total distribution of 760,000, and Sunset has a print distribution of 1.4 million. So we've been placing some pretty awesome ads and some pretty great publications. Regional advertising, so we participate in local advertising to reach our community, to remind them of what great offerings we have just right in our backyard, just kind of promoting those staycations and check out what's new in your own county. Television ads, we participate to increase our brand awareness. BTC runs promotions on Cron IV in the Bay Area, ABC 10 in the Sacramento area, each of which included a variety of tactics and traditional broadcast segments. So some highlights from Cron included 15 second promotions, one live interview for three to five minutes, and their display banner ads received 250,000 impressions. And some highlights from ABC 10 included a Your California Live segment and banners on Bartle Backroads. And I don't know if you guys know this, but Bartle is pretty, he's a big fan of Toolumee County, so he comes up here and does a lot of segments. I'll just play for you. That's our commercial. This was our ABC 10 television segment, you might recognize me on there. It was really fun, I got to actually go into studio and do a live interview, so I'll just play a little bit of it for you. Or not. But you can catch it online, it is on our website. So our radio ads, we ran streaming ads, and we received about 904,000 impressions on them, so. Do you guys feel like you're in the moment yet? Perfect, I mean, we're pretty close. So every year, we put out an annual travel guide, we have 75,000 copies printed, and we distribute them in the San Francisco Bay Area, San Jose, Oakland International Airport. We distribute them around the county, so when visitors are in county, they can pick them up, and it's just full of restaurants, businesses, hotels, everything to do, where to go. We get a lot of local people who see them in the Bay Area, and they come back and they're like, oh my gosh, I saw this, like, in Trader Joe's in San Francisco, so it's really exciting. And we actually participated in a study that was done by DMA West Education and Research Foundation, and it was a destination analysis on travel guides. And it concluded that travel guides are very much still relevant, and ours actually had the biggest conversion rate, which meant that most people who read and went through our travel guide ended up booking a trip to Toolumee County. We continue to use them. So our website traffic outperformed last year's numbers by sessions by 48%. So the top sessions by city were San Francisco and Sacramento. And we started last fiscal year to do a website refresh, and we will be launching our new website in the next coming week. And so we did this to become more mobile-friendly, because the trends are people are using more mobile, so we wanted our website to be easier to use on mobile and more convertible. So we are launching our website in the coming weeks. Our Booking Referral Program, so this is a free program for our members and partners. We absorb all the costs of the Book Direct from Simple View platform. It allows visitors to book directly on our website. So on the platform, visitors completed a total of 20,000 searches, resulting in 11,000 total referrals, lodging websites, and 229 bookings. So the estimated total bookings revenues for that was $100,000, which is an ROI of 1,710%. So it's a pretty big ROI. So we're going to move into campaigns. So our Wander Freely Campaign, so travel trends continue to favor outdoor travel in small destinations, which fits Toolumee County perfectly. So we continue to invite visitors using our Wander Freely Campaign. We expanded our markets outside of the San Francisco Bay Area and Sacramento these past years into Las Vegas, Phoenix, Seattle, and Houston. And this year, we gave our ad creative a new Wander Freely theme, so it kind of makes it a little more inviting. So I'll show it to you on the next slide. So this is our new ad campaign. So wander leads to wonder, set your compass to wander, things like that, so it's really fun. This year, we also ran an in-market campaign. So the campaign was designed not only for locals, but it was also designed to target travelers that are already in the destination. So it was in hoping that they would expand their trip and extend their trip while they're in the destination, so we're catching them while they're here, and also giving them ideas of places that they might not know that are in the area. So if they're coming to just say in Yosemite, we were able to tell them about Sonora. And so kind of running that in-market campaign expanded their ideas of where they could travel in the area as well. Art Week. So we were pleased to host our second annual Toolumee County Art Week. Some notable results from Art Week, we included 37 individual artists and crafters, and we registered 76 artists and crafters, and they were represented through associations. And artists were highlighted at 20 different venues throughout the county, and we will be doing a third annual Art Week this coming year. So in January of 2002, we launched our Craft Beverage Trail in partnership with Band Way and Go. We launched our very first trail, and it was centered around our breweries, wineries, cideries, and cider distillery, so we named it the Craft Beverage Trail. So it doesn't limit us to just like a brew trail or something like that. So we're looking to expand it this year to add on some of our restaurants that have craft cocktails, like the Armory or Embers. So it was really successful. In our very first couple of months, we saw 223 signups and 213 check-ins. Visit Toolumee County also had an average conversion rate of 86% for people who signed up for the pass and actually checked in, and that surpassed the average rate by 30%. Public relations. So this past year, Visit Toolumee County took public relations efforts back in-house, and we utilize Visit California media calls. We use a software called Mcrack, that is one of the largest media databases. And we use Help a Reporter Out to submit not only press releases, media pitches, proactive pitches, but as a result of those, we secured 97 media clips, reaching 1.74 billion people. International marketing. So we work with three international markets that actually align with Visit California's international markets this year. So as most of you know, like international marketers or international visitors stay longer and spend more money. And so one of the agencies we work with is Black Diamond in the UK. We're heading into our fifth year with Black Diamond, and so we've really established a brand with them. This past year, some notable results from Black Diamond include 86 media placements that reached nearly 33 million people with a combined value of $370,000. On the travel trade side, we trained 63 agents, and we hosted one fam, including Virgin Atlantic Holidays. And this fam had so much fun, there was one person who was on it who's been in the industry for over 38 years, and she said this was her favorite fam that she's ever been on. Not only that, it was her favorite trip that she's ever been on, and she's so excited to bring her family back. So then, we also work with DCI in Canada. So as we relaunched ourselves into the Canadian market post-pandemic, we were featured in Global Calgary News. We participated in a destination giveaway with a well-known Canadian writer, Jody Robbins. And Toolumee County was placed in a popular magazine called Hello Canada. It was actually one of my personal favorites, because on the cover was the royal family. So we were placed amongst the royals, so I thought that was pretty awesome. And then we also work with GMS in Mexico. So Mexico is projected to be one of the number one international travelers to California based on their length of stay and their spin. So some notable wins from this past year included over 200 travel agent trainings. And we did a translated training deck for them, so we've created a whole deck, they translated into Spanish. And then we also have a translated website in Spanish, which is really awesome. And then we ran social ads that link back to that website as well. And then just recently, one of our largest lodging properties reported an increase in Mexican visitation, and they contributed to our work with GMS, which is Global Marketing Strategies in Mexico. So meetings and events, in an effort to fill our off-peak and midweek business, we created a meeting planner guide that lives online, and we send it out to just meeting planners that we meet. We work with industry organizations, we attend meeting planner conventions, and we receive and distribute RFPs through a platform called Seve. And it's one of the biggest and largest industry-recognized platforms. So what's really exciting this year is we've been trying to push meetings and conventions for a while. We've had an incentive program, and it's based on how many room nights are booked in the county. And we started that incentive program in 2019, and we actually just got to use our first one this year. So that was very exciting for us. With that, I'm going to pass it back to Lisa to talk about what's happening, what we got to have to look forward to. Thank you. Thanks, Katie. Just to wrap up our portion here, a couple of things. This is our new Mobile Visitor Center. This is something that we had planned on getting in probably 2020, 2019, and we had it on order, and it never came. It was, we got it through Sonora Board, but it was being put together in Turkey, and we are on month eight, and then COVID hit, and we canceled it, because we didn't know what anything was going to look like. But really excited to say that happened to check in with Ford, they had this one sitting on their lot, and we were able to get that. And this will be used for travel shows, it will be used for attending events around the area here. Also, some road shows that we have planned, where we'll be going down to San Francisco area, and also LA, and meeting with potential visitors and media down in those areas. But it's obviously, it stands out. I had somebody the other day tell me that they were next to me, and they're like, honky and honky, and I was just very much focused on driving this big van. So I felt bad, I guess I was kind of antisocial that day with him. But it's really great, and you could see, I think, on the door there, just the side of the door is the picture of Sonora, that one that everyone loves. But it's really fun if you go all the way around it and see all the different sides of it. Right now, there is one row of seats, and that originally--
Right now there is one row of seats and that originally was not in the original plan, but we are glad to have those. In fact, we kind of want a second row because we're having some transportation issues with a familiarization trip we have going on this week. But we will eventually have it in inside retrofitted with like a table and some brochure holder things and make it kind of a fun, a fun little spot. Um, next we are, we have always been a membership organization, meaning that people pay dues to belong to visit to Alami County. But what that goes towards is if they want to be listed on our website, they'll, they get that as part of those dues. And they also get to be in the vacation planner and there's bringing their, their brochures, business cards in the visitor centers, all kinds of different types of benefits with that. But we really felt that we are feeling, and I shared this with the board, just that we're not really a membership. We shouldn't really be a membership. We should be more of a partnership where people are actually paying based on what service they want. So if they want to just be on the website, it would be a certain amount. It's kind of a more of an à la carte. It gives them a little more control into what they want to do and how they want to do that. This is a big change for us. We don't have all the details down just yet and it will probably be going into effect after the first of the year. And you can, these are some of our partners. We have a wide variety of partners. And finally, next year is our 40th anniversary. So we're having a lot of fun planning some 40th anniversary things. And one of those is we do have a Spotify channel. And one of our, on our Spotify channel, one of our stations is favorites from 1983 BTC's 40th anniversary mixtape. So anyone remember Flashdance? Do you feel old now? Because I, I really do. Super old. I'm like, I saw the list. I'm like, there's no way this was for you. Because I know every single song. Anyway, more to come on that. And I just want to thank you on behalf of a visit to Alami County for your continued support in tourism. I hope that this presentation showed what a resilient industry tourism is and how important it is, the spending that goes on here that supports all of our mom and pop shops and, and restaurants and the hotels and everything. And, and the jobs that it provides as well. I think it's just extremely important. And I hope that you saw that through our presentation tonight. And with that, I'm going to toss it over to Kathy and she's just going to go through. Yes.
If the council has any questions for you, could we answer them, ask them perhaps now while everything's fresh?
I wasn't sure.
If that's okay.
Sure.
Any questions? Because I have some, but please take, okay.
I had, I had just one. I was, I was interested about your data collection, you know, how you come up with your $240 million.
Yeah. Great question. So that, that is through Dean Runyon and Dean Runyon Associates. They're hired by Visit California and that is how we get those stats is through Visit California.
So I had a couple then. And one was in the partnership programs that you showed, it showed the rad card still being there. Is that an ongoing program? Because I had thought it was just associated with the COVID redevelopment or?
Yeah, that was just showing from, from the previous fiscal year.
The reason for my question is I've been asked if they were going to do it again. And I said, I don't think so, but, but this was the perfect opportunity to find out.
Great question. Yeah, I am not knowing the answer to that.
Well, it would seem not, no longer appropriate for the times, but. And then the clean travel outreach program and effort. Has that had notable results or I mean measurable? Or we can say this is, this is good because I like the approach, but I'm hoping that it's been very effective.
Yeah, I think, I think it's, it's hard to measure when we're not out there in the field and seeing what's happening. I think the best that we can really do is to encourage that and to, I'll tell you, when we did the cleanup day at Pinecrest, the number of people that stopped and said, thank you so much for doing this or can I help? And some people even went to our check-in table and said, can I take a bag with me on the trail? And so I think just seeing that kind of reaction was really, you know, gave me a lot of optimism that this is something that people are concerned about. And, and hopefully if we all, you know, can work, it sounds cliche, but if we can all work together and, and keep, keep everything clean, just clean up after ourselves. It doesn't take a lot just to pick up that trash.
Well, and seeing people do that also helps with actual personal buy-in where they do it as well.
Absolutely.
And then lastly, the à la carte, the new model, it sounds sort of experimental, but is there a, an optimism that will actually bring in more revenue? Because it would allow people with smaller budgets to also have a presence?
It might. I mean, that could, that could be an added benefit to that from our perspective. But I think really for us, it's, we, we always have and we always will promote to Alami County as a whole. And I think there was a lot of, not a lot, but there was some concern and more recently that I've heard about, oh, you know, you have to be a member and that's the only way you get promoted. And that's not, that's not the case. And it was just the wrong name for it. It was, you know, so this way it's like, oh yeah, I bought into that, that host or that whatever it was, you know? So it's, so everyone feel, everyone, it's more inclusive.
Okay. And I, I appreciate that. That's why I was, but okay. I mean, it's nice where it makes it available and to buy in at a lower price point for smaller businesses and modest outreach budgets.
I had another, I had another couple of questions. You said 75,000 copies of the travel guides. Is that enough? I mean, I, I cover all the Trader Joe's in the Bay area. I was like, what? So are you planning to do more than?
There have been years where we have run out and we have printed more. We do have it online as well. And so we really try to, to direct people to the online version. And, and through that online version as well, you can, you can click on everything from there too. So it's, you know.
Oh, it's very interactive. And then what, how do you access the visit to Alami County in Spanish? Can you actually, you go to the website and there, and then there's a, you know, on Espanol button or something?
You can go to visita toalami.com.
Oh, I'm sorry. Visita or visita. Okay. Oh, I see it. You just went past it. Visita toalami.com. Okay. I was going to tell some, some Mexican friends. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Any more questions?
Uh, yeah, I was actually curious, what exactly is on your Spotify playlist? And are you highlighting any local bands in that playlist? Because I can think of several that would love to be on that playlist.
That is an excellent idea. We do not, I don't think we have a local fan on, a local spot on there. But that's a great idea and something that we will certainly look into. Yeah, thank you. And maybe we can get some.
I have plenty of suggestions. Some self-serving, some not.
Yeah. Offering.
And it looks like our, our Spanish website made it up there. I'm just not sure how to get it back. Yes, and thank you.
Oh, just a random thought I had, just because it was always kind of a joke pipe dream of mine as I'm a fan of Anchor Steam Brewing. But one of the things that I think a lot of, like you do a lot of marketing in San Francisco is that they don't understand that 85% of their water comes from Tuolumne County. So maybe having some sort of tie-in, you know, to say, hey, come see where Anchor Steam really comes from, you know, like up in Yosemite or something, you know, might be a great tie-in, you know, for some big local breweries down there. You know, I gotta say, I personally was on your, the craft beverage thing. I saw it at the tap room, I think, back when we were not primaries, but when I was originally, originally running for office and I thought that was a really cool idea. So maybe some tie-in with Anchor Steam or some other, you know, San Francisco based breweries might be interesting, you know, to explore in the future.
Yeah, we work a lot with San Francisco travels.
Yeah, I just hear all the time from many a San Franciscan that they have no idea that their water comes from us. So it might be cool to kind of exploit that a little more.
Got me thinking about the hedge, hedgey hazet around the horn now. So that's pretty interesting. All right.
Thank you very much.
Hey, thank you. And thank you to your staff too. They've been great in helping us coordinate all this and everything.
They're always great.
Kathy. Come on up. I'm not.
Nice, rather short. So just push that down a little bit.
Yeah.
Can you guys hear me? Okay. All right. So I work with, as Lisa mentioned, with the Tuolumne County team. And back in around October time, we put forth the campaign to help with the city of Sonora. The city had some additional funds. And they, in partnership with Visit to Alami County, we put together a social media campaign as well as helped with some owned and organic efforts. So I'll go through those really quickly. So for our paid media campaign, really the goal was to drive awareness to the city of Sonora. Ultimately to really encourage people to come and stay here, but then also shop at the small, at our local small businesses. Our target audiences was pretty much everyone that was 18 or older. If we had an ad that had some alcohol featured in it, of course, that was 21 and over. But it was pretty much all adults. The campaign ran November through March. And during that timeframe, we actually saw through the Madden media research that Sonora was one of the top visiting places to go within the county each month. So the campaign really showed in that way. But our main tactic that we used was paid social, so on ads on Facebook. And we geo-targeted it to areas that had a high propensity to travel to Sonora. So looking at Stockton, Sacramento, Modesto area, Bakersfield, Chico, Reading, Fresno, lots of different areas, except for the city of Sonora, of course. So we excluded them. So here's an example of some of our creative. We ran a series of single image ads, carousel ads, which I'll show you in a bit, as well as slideshow videos. Our campaign was really to bring out the SO, the SO in Sonora. It's so close to Yosemite. It's so fun to explore. There's so many restaurants. There's so much to do. So really, our campaign was all around the SO and emphasizing that. And we had ad sets that really touched on the different types of businesses. So whether you're, you know, walking around town or different activities like hiking. Our ads also were very interest-based. So we looked at people who enjoyed wine, beer, nature, outdoors. So we were able to reach those folks as well. Looking at, this is one of the examples of a carousel ad. Again, talk more about the different activities and outdoor options. This one was all about food and staying here. And then this next one was all about shopping and staying as well. Now, addition to the paid ads, we wanted to be able to give some people a place to land. So when they clicked on the ad, they would have the same holistic experience from when they first click to what they see on the site. So we worked with the team to add a new landing page. Let me see if this will play. It will. So this is our landing page and essentially it includes all the different things from staying, shopping, dining, every button that's on here. And this page is still live on the site. If it's, if you click visit downtown, that's the page that comes up. But all of these buttons go to other pages throughout the site. The only one that is more to an external link is the, the per stay. And that uses the booking platform that Visit to Alami County has. So when you click there, it goes to a filtered stay page on, on their website so that people can book directly. And then we also helped manage the organic social media efforts. So in addition to running paid ads, we help provide monthly calendars to help get more posts and engagements. And the page saw really great engagements. I mean, our paid campaign saw four million impressions. But through that and our organic efforts, we were able to grow the audience, the follow, number of followers by 30% in just the short time period. And then we were also able to earn 15,000 engagements. And what those engagements are, the post clicks, the likes, the comments, the shares. So people were really, really engaged and, and it was just such a short time period. And what you see on the screen here is the top three posts out of the entire campaign for the organic side. And it's really nice to see because it's a good variety. You mentioned the red church. It always does so good. But then also we have lodging with the, the Royal Olive Manor. We have businesses showcasing the people who actually work there and made it just seem a little, you know, very authentic. And then we also developed an email template. So this is, was designed and coded into MailChimp. So it's a platform that the city is able to use at any time to send out emails to the different. I think there was like a database of about 2,000 businesses in the area. So with this, what you'll see here, you can't read it. It's all gibberish, but it's, it's meant to be a template. And it allows to, for whoever wants to send out these newsletters to customize what types of sections they want to use. So they don't have to use all of them. But things like there's going to be a city council meeting. These are events that are coming up. Here's some resources for our businesses. So we created all the different sections with that strategy in mind. And that is it for our efforts with the city. Any questions?
Yes. Oh, please go ahead.
Okay. Well, I, I guess I got confused way back at the beginning. Can you clarify the media? Is this Instagram? Is it?
It was all ran on Facebook.
On Facebook? Okay. All right. And what is a carousel ad?
A carousel ad? So you've probably seen them if you've ever gone Facebook. It's basically where ones where you can swipe.
Oh.
And you see other like different cards. We use those carousel ads also got turned into slideshow videos. So it's basically, it was all the same content, just a different format.
And were you able to determine any ROI on, on the campaign?
Yes. So as I mentioned, we were able to submit, to earn 4,000, sorry, 4 million impressions within the timeframe. From those, we had a really high click-through rate. I think the industry average for Facebook is around 0.9% when people click on ads. And our ads were getting about 2%. Our engagement rates were also very, very high. So yeah, they did really well.
And then I assume it's not still live?
No, it ran, it stopped in March of this past year.
So I am probably going to look horribly ignorant, but I am completely unfamiliar with the Augustine Agency. Is that, am I missing something? Or would the public also maybe be interested in knowing who you are or representing and?
Sure. Yeah. So, and that's a perfect question. So I actually met Lisa at an industry event called Outlook Forum back in 2020, right? Yes. And so we connected and we started helping out with efforts for Visit to Alami County. Then we worked with Mary Rose when she was here. And she said, you know, I have this amount of funds. I would love to work with you. Basically, I mean, we basically did everything through Lisa's team, but worked with the, and they also funded a portion of the campaign. And then worked with Mary Rose to come up with the, the campaign and the creative and all of that. Augustine Agency itself is a full-service agency. We work with a lot in the destination space along with other verticals such as government, food. Like Mission Tortillas is one of our clients as well. So we have a quite a big gamut of different types of clients that we help.
Thank you very much. I'm sure somebody told me about it and I have just forgotten. I sometimes forget things. But I appreciate it. Thank you very much and thank you for coming. I sometimes forget things, but I appreciate it. Thank you very much and thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Any further questions and? No? Okay, thank you. So, that was wonderful and delightful. And on the way in, I met our next presenter, Dr. Freeman, who, please come up and the subject is going to be not nearly as pleasant. But thank you very much for coming because this is another area of considerable ignorance for me.
Well, thank you for having me. Uh, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, members of the council. My name's Kim Freeman. I'm your Public Health and EMS Medical Director for the county. Uh, my background, uh, began many, many years ago in high school. I, or I'm sorry, in college, I became a firefighter, seasonal firefighter, and then worked on the ambulance and went to medical school and, uh, went to residency, became emergency medicine-trained. And I've been here in Twomey County sixteen years. Fit Sonora Regional, now, uh, Adventist Health Sonora for thirteen of those years, then COO at Matheson, and now Public Health Officer. Um, during that time, I was, uh, I began with Dr. Stulp in the opioid coalition in two thousand and ten. And I'm here tonight to talk to you about things that aren't so much fun. Thank you. Um, about the state of the opioid epidemic here in Twomey County, which is unfortunately pretty grim. So first, a little bit of definition. Narcotics are a class of drugs that include the opioids and the opiates. You will hear those words interchangeably and that's fine. You can mislabel them as much as you want. Everybody knows what they, what you mean. But be precise about it. An opioid is a synthetic and an opiate is naturally derived from the opium poppy plant, which is not the California poppy. The thing that opioids do is produce a variety of effects, um, primarily pain relief. Uh, also produce euphoria, which is what people seek when they're not necessarily seeking pain relief. Unfortunately, they also slow down breathing and GI, like gastrointestinal, uh, which causes the horrible side effects of nausea, vomiting, and constipation, but also causes the horrible side effect of potentially death, uh, with respiratory depression. And that's why I'm here tonight mostly to tell you about why they're so dangerous because, you know, if somebody wants to get high or they want to be out of pain, who cares? The problem is that it, it can be deadly. So as I mentioned, opiates are the natural, uh, opium plants. Opium, morphine, codeine, and heroin are in those, uh, categories. Um, opioids are synthesized chemicals, hydrocodone, oxycodone, and fentanyl being the ones you've probably heard of. There is a, a state dashboard. You can Google it and find all the data that I'm going to give you. Uh, publicly available. So Twomey County is the first in the state, meaning the worst, for morphine milligram equivalents, number of residents over ninety morphine milligram equivalents, and opioid and benzocoups prescriptions. So morphine milligram equivalents is the way to equilibrate a prescription of Norco and a prescription of Percocet, for instance. A Norco-ten is worth ten morphine milligrams, the same as getting an injection of ten milligrams of morphine. A Percocet-ten is worth fifteen. So with that, we can equilibrate how much the body is actually receiving of morphine milligram equivalents. Benzos or benzodiazepines are dangerous because they do some of the same things as, as opioids. Primarily, the dangerous part is they cause respiratory depression. And what that means is when you put opioids and benzos together, together, they're much more likely to cause death. So this is one of the reasons why it's followed on the state dashboard so we can measure how at risk a population might be. Benzodiazepines are things you might have heard of like Xanax or Ativan or Valium. Twomey is second in the state, just behind Calaveras for the number of opioid prescriptions. We're barely behind Calaveras. The number is like eight hundred and three to eight hundred and seven. It's almost miniscule. We'll get more to the numbers. So a lot of the questions I've gotten over the last twelve years is, is our population different? Is there something about our population that means they deserve more opioids? We're an amazing place. We have amazing people. We do have an older population. Um, but that doesn't really bear out and I'll show you some data on that. Um, our cancer rate is a little bit on the high-medium side, but again, that doesn't bear out as a good reason, and I'll show you that. I do want to say that just today, I received some data, um, at Rotary Club a couple of weeks ago. It was asked, you know, what about disabled? We do have a higher population of disabled and of veterans, um, but I haven't worked those statistics out the way that you'll see here. I still don't think it's going to bear out as a good reason to prescribe so high, but it is something I wanted to acknowledge is a little bit different about our population. So here's the cancer incidence in the mid-teens. Um, in the light purple there, kind of mid, you know, next to Sacramento is Twomey County. You can see compared to the, um, the map on the, the right, the incidence level, it's kind of high, high, or I'm sorry, medium-high. Um, but that isn't the highest in the state. There's many places with higher cancer incidence rates and they don't prescribe higher. This graph is done in two thousand and twenty, for the two thousand and twenty data. Um, it's done, I did this personally, uh, using statistics from the Census and, uh, the two thousand and twenty dashboard, the opioid dashboard from the state. So what I did was take the fourteen states or fourteen counties with the highest, uh, elderly population and I compared their can, their incidence of prescribing and their percentage of elderly population. So as you can see there, Twomey County is highest, but we're not necessarily the oldest. It doesn't really bear out that, that being the highest in prescribing is deserved compared to other counties, some of which very similar demographics are prescribing less than half of what is prescribed in Twomey County. Same kind of situation for morphine milligram equivalents. We are much higher than the other counties with an elderly population. And it doesn't really show that a line could be drawn through there that would, um, equilibrate the data and make it say, yeah, we should be prescribing because we deserve to be, because there's a good reason for it. And one of the reasons I used elderly is you would say, you know, maybe there's more chronic conditions. Maybe there's more pain by the time you've lived through more and more things. So it's a, it's a surrogate representative. It's not, you know, that everybody who's older should be using opioids. And then this, residents on morphine milligram equivalents greater than ninety. Here, ninety again is a danger equivalent. Over ninety, the chance of having an overdose is much higher. Um, just on Friday, though, the CDC put out a statement, a ninety-five-page statement on, uh, prescribing and guidance for prescribers, and they've lowered their threshold to fifty. Just on Friday. So it'll be interesting to see how that bears out and if they change the state dashboard. Uh, but they're basically saying over fifty, you're not getting a whole lot more pain control, but you're, uh, increasing the risk quite a bit. So this is the opioid prescription rate per one thousand in Twomey County from two thousand and ten through the latest data available of two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, Twomey County is the blue line and California average is the orange line. So as you can see, in two thousand and ten, we were prescribing about fourteen hundred, uh, prescriptions per one thousand. About fourteen, basically, per person in the sta, in the county, compared to about, uh, six hundred per thousand in the state. So we've done a decent job of decreasing there, but as you can see, in two thousand and twenty-one, we're about eight hundred. We're still not down to what the state average was in two thousand and ten, twelve years later. And this is even more dramatic. At the top there, the yellow bar is, uh, Twomey County. And these are all the other counties in the state. I'm sorry, Calaveras is number one on this one. We're barely number two. So all the other counties in the state with red, the red line there being the California average. You can see that we're, you know, more than twice as much as the California average. One of the other questions that's come up is, well, you know, we have maybe more working class. People have been injured, people who, uh, you know, are ag or construction or people who hurt more because they're more physical. But you can see here in the middle, Kern, Merced, Madera, Yuba, Sutter. Other working counties don't have higher rates. Some of them don't even have half the rate that we do. Uh, for morphine milligram equivalents, this is even more dramatic, in my opinion. Here you can see the blue line again is Twomey County. Orange line is California average. Twenty-five hundred morphine milligram equivalents per resident annually in two thousand and ten. That'd be the equivalent of every man, woman, child in the county getting two hundred and fifty Norco-tens a year. That's what was happening. And we were not number one then. We were number three. So we've decreased quite a bit. We've decreased by two-thirds. We're down to about eight hundred now. But we're still not even down to where the California state average was in two thousand and ten. And here we can see that we are way above everybody else. It's a pretty dramatic step down to number two, which is Calaveras. Number three is Trinity. Enyo is number four and Amador is number five. You know, a large majority of the number, of the top five are, uh, the motherland, which is also striking. And then you step down quite a bit as it gets down. The rest of the players still kind of stay where they are. You know, your, uh, Napa and Fresno and Marin, they're all kind of in the middle. El Dorado, San Luis Obispo, they kind of stay that way throughout these illustrations here. Here is our county by color, um, darkest red being the worst, uh, showing how we're prescribing compared to other counties. And if you look at this compared to what I showed you with the cancer incidence, there's a lot of counties there with much less cancer incidents that are prescribing much, much less than us. More cancer incidents prescribing less than us. It, uh, it doesn't really bear out. And this is morphine milligram equivalents. Residents on greater than ninety morphine milligram equivalents. Remember that is a sign of a potential dangerous situation. Uh, we've decreased quite a bit again, and now we're about thirty-two, uh, per one thousand. We're at about a hundred and twenty per, uh, a thousand in two thousand and ten. So we're moving in the right direction, but we're still way above the state average here. And again, this shows, uh, dramatically, it's almost cut off. Twomey County is there at the top and then moving down to, um, Enyo, Calaveras Lake and Siski after that. That's what it looks like on the map. Again, we're deepest red. San Bernardino is just behind on that one. Overlapping opioids and benzos, uh, this is the rate per one thousand. And again, this is another sign of danger. Uh, way high in two thousand and ten, seventy. Uh, we've gotten down to about thirty. Again, not even down to the state average in two thousand and ten. So a great improvement, but a good, long way to go. And this again shows what it looks like compared to the other counties. Dramatically, Twomey County is much, much higher. Of concern is it's not just the prescriptions. Prescriptions are going down, but other factors that are really important are going up. Um, unfortunately, the data on the state dashboard was only available through two thousand and twenty, uh, so far. This shows that hospitalizations, while they improved quite a bit, in Twomey County have in, uh, increased in two thousand and twenty. And this one's the most frightening. Um, orange again is California, blue is Twomey County, and this is the deaths. So we were above the state. We dropped nicely, um, two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, twenty. Uh, the state started going up on average and we've increased dramatically. Uh, we now equal the state there for average deaths per hundred thousand. This graph is a little bit different. This is all drug overdose deaths and opioid overdose deaths only in Twomey County. So the orange line no longer is California average. The orange line is opioid overdoses and the blue line is all overdoses. Okay, which could include alcohol or methamphetamine, other, other ills. As you can see, uh, kind of starting with the pandemic, the opioids went up and it is driving the blue curve up. You've probably heard about fentanyl and how deadly and awful it is. Fentanyl is extremely potent and amount equivalent to three grains of salt can kill you. Okay, much, much more fentanyl has come into the area. Um, the sheriff has said that a lot of it's being smuggled in from Mexico. Um, and we're seeing much, much, much more fentanyl in the streets. Uh, counterfeit pills unfortunately are very unpredictable. So somebody who might use opioids because they got hooked, uh, and they're using them for maintenance, they won't know if pill A and pill B from the same vendor contain the same amount. The way that they're pressed illicitly in other clandestine markets, they're not equilib, they're not FDA-run. They're not, um, looked at to make sure that they're pure or not. So you might have one pill that has, you know, ten percent of it is fentanyl. The next one would be thirty percent. The next one will kill you, even though they look exactly the same. Another drug is out there. It's, uh, been noted on the East Coast and in Europe. It's called protonidazine. I don't have a whole lot of information for you, but if you want to know, you heard it first, it was here. Um, it's stronger than fentanyl and it's killing people. It is an opioid. Both fentanyl and protonidazine can be found in powder, tablets, and can be in syringes too. This is about California in general. I don't know if you've heard about rainbow fentanyl, but it is quite frightening. Rainbow fentanyl looks like this. It looks like Sweet Tarts. And it's meant to hook the youth. It's not meant to poison Halloween candy. Nobody wants people who aren't going to pay for their drugs to get them, uh, because they want people who are going to pay for drugs. So, you know, the people who are out there selling these things aren't trying to poison kids. But kids make bad decisions and they can make a bad choice about these. Um, in California, ED visits due to non-fatal opioid overdose increased more than three times in two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and twenty. Opioid-related OD deaths increased four hundred percent and fentanyl-related increased more than six hundred percent. And I want to point out the raw numbers there. Two thousand and twenty, two hundred and sixty-one of the overdose fentanyl, uh, there was two hundred and sixty-one fentanyl overdose deaths, but two hundred and seventy-four opioid overdose deaths. So in the state of California, all of the opioid deaths besides thirteen of them were fentanyl. It's a quite dramatic change from what the opioid statistics looked like a few years ago. This is Twomey County. Your blue line there is your total overdose deaths. Your red line is opioid overdose deaths and, uh, the green line is fentanyl overdose deaths. Two thousand and twenty-two is only through September thirtieth. So, you know, obviously the, the time is marching on, but that's your first nine months of the year. Um, on the other axis, uh, it's, uh, the, each line is two numbers up, so two, four, six, eight, if you can't see it very well. So as you can see, in two thousand and eighteen, we had a total of eight overdose deaths and only one of them was opioids. So far in two thousand and twenty-two, we've had nineteen overdose deaths. Eight of those, well, now nine, I heard last week, we're up to nine fentanyl, um, slash opioid, uh, deaths. We still have several under investigation. So though that blue line or the fentanyl, even if we don't have any more deaths for the year, might still increase as we get some of those, uh, tox reports back. Uh, is asked, who is doing this? Who's overdosing? And it's all over the map. Fortunately, we haven't had young, young kids yet, but I don't think it's not going to happen unfortunately. It's just too easy to get. Uh, so this, uh, I can tell you the raw numbers here. The twenty-five to twenty-nine-year-olds were two. This is again, two thousand and twenty-one. Two of the deaths, thirty-five to thirty-nine was two, forty-five to forty-nine was three. And I know the number or the graph looks a little different, but each sixty-five to sixty-nine and seventy to seventy-four were one death. This was again from the state dashboard. I don't know why those bars are slightly off. Before I talk about what's on the horizon, I want to answer a few questions that you might have about how did we get here? Um, how did we get to prescribing so much? And it's an unfortunate, uh, conglomeration of events that happened in the nineties, um, where, uh, the nurses and the, the companies, you know, the companies that produce opioids really pushed hard that thou shalt not be in pain. Pain is the fifth vital sign. Pain is as important as your blood pressure, your temperature, your heart rate, and your breathing rate. That's what they pushed. And so when I was in training and when I was, um, in residency, you know, you had to assess pain on everybody, just as important as, you know, if they were, heart rate was a hundred and fifty, which is way above normal. So, and then you had to treat pain, that you make sure people are not in pain. No pain was what was, uh, accepted. And this is partly driven by the lawyers. If you didn't treat pain enough, you could get sued. And two docs in the nineties were successfully sued for not prescribing enough. In addition to that, the, uh, drug companies came in and told docs that it's not dangerous and you will not create addicts. If you treat for pain, it's fine. In my own school, UC San Francisco, one of the best schools in the country, somebody came into my pharmacology class and told us that. And, you know, a lot of impressionable people believed that. I was already running on the ambulance and, and using Narcan. So I, I didn't believe it, but most people hadn't had any clinical experience. So it's a very unfortunate con, uh, conglomeration of events that created this problem. Why are we worse than Twomey County? And once you have people who are addicted to medicines, it's really, really, really hard to get them off. Um, they've been on them for decades and it changes your brain chemistry. It changes your dopamine. It changes your happy hormones. And so it's not just about going through withdrawal. It's about going through the sadness and the depression and all the other things that happen with removing those medicines as you're trying to get them to have a normal life again. So it's a complex issue. It's not as easy as saying, sorry, I can't prescribe anymore. Um, it, it requires a lot more than that, but it can be done. And other counties are doing it much faster than us. That's how we ended up at number one. On the horizon, um, all of Adventist Health West, all their nineteen hospitals, uh, have signed a grant to have a substance use navigator in the emergency department. So our own hospital is going to have that access. What that person is going to do is, uh, take the patients who are in high doses or in withdrawal or in overdose and, and, uh, link them with resources in the county, which there actually are quite a few. There's a couple addiction clinics, um, getting them into those resources, making an appointment for them, following up and making sure they made it to their appointment. Um, we're hoping that that will have high success in getting people into recovery. Um, so the other thing that we can do is, uh, work on the EMS side and help patients even before they get into the hospital, uh, with medicines for withdrawal, but also in reducing, um, opiates there. Uh, we just put Tylenol on the ambulance, IV Tylenol. And there's lots of, uh, studies that show that IV Tylenol is actually pretty equivalent to IV morphine, uh, if you use it first, which is amazing. Most people wouldn't believe that's true. But it is bearing out in the research that you can make a big impression with, uh, IV Tylenol and it won't necessarily stop using opioids for those painful conditions, but it will reduce the need for them. And that's the first step in reducing prescriptions and, uh, you know, ongoing pain. So it's, it's kind of exciting that we have some things on the horizon. If you aren't aware of naloxone, naloxone is the reversal agent. Narcan is its other name. Um, it's over the counter. It's free at the Matheson Memorial Health Clinic. You just got to go in and watch a little video and they'll distribute it to you, to you. Um, you can get it over the counter at pharmacies, no questions asked. get it over the counter at pharmacies, no questions asked, no prescription needed, and they will also train you on it. If there's anybody in your life that might be at risk, or if you have any pills at home, you know, for your own self, and kids live at home, it's really important to have those things on hand. So talking to people, making sure that they understand there's resources, those are good next steps. Here's my references, research. What questions do you have?
So me being a deputy sheriff for many years, I'm very familiar with all this. So you don't have much of a learning curve with me.
Great.
But now, as a city leader, I'd like to know a pathway out of this that possibly you think is possible. I know in the police academy, we had a whole section on marijuana being a gateway drug, and, and now it's a different marijuana. I know there's medicinal marijuana. What are your thoughts about a pathway out of this that maybe might include that? So, go ahead.
That's a good question. I think the path is multifactorial. The reason we're here is multifactorial. The path out is multifactorial. Part of it is educating prescribers and patients that there's other alternatives, and helping them seek those. Unfortunately, somebody who's an addict isn't going to seek resources without at least some nudging or some crisis. People are happy where they are. They've been on these things for decades. They haven't had any trouble. They don't think there's a problem. So it does take some nudging by loved ones or other people involved, like, hey, maybe there's a better way. Maybe you don't need to use these things for pain. Maybe we can work on your diet, or physical therapy, or there's a lot of other avenues to help treat pain. So getting people aware of those things, and so, you know, getting patients to be advocates for themselves. Yeah, I've been on these things for two decades, but maybe I can do something different. And if they can seek resources, there are other medications out there. Buprenorphine can be used for pain, not just for addiction, and it's much, much, much less devastating. It won't cause overdoses. You can take a whole bottle of it without any problem. It's quite a crazy thing. That's a whole nother lecture. But there's other avenues. Educating the providers, and this is one of the things that I personally have been trying to do, is getting out into the clinics and teaching the providers that there's other ways to do this. These are the ways you can do it. You know, call me. I took a lot of patients down or off their medicines in my time as real health clinic director. So please, talk to me. Let's work through your cases. So I'm hoping that inviting a discussion, maybe opening back up a medical society where people can come together to talk about it, learn more about it. And then on the law enforcement side, the narcotics team was disbanded in 2020. They don't have enough personnel or money to make it run again. So advocating to have that become a part of it again, so that they can, you know, bust the dealers, the people are bringing it into the county. If we don't have it coming into the county, it's going to be harder to get the illicit stuff.
Well, let me clarify a little bit. We were always taught that marijuana is a gateway drug. And so what I would like to see is not so much of a push for marijuana, not having people open into that into the first place, as a very first step. I get the whole medical marijuana thing, but to keep promoting more and more pot shops, I think is opening a door and giving tacit approval to the young people who see that, and then it's not enough, and then they need something more strong, and then it's something, that's what starts the pathway to addiction. So could you comment on that?
Yeah, sorry, I didn't know you were actually specifically asking about marijuana. You know, anything that's mind altering can be addictive. And all things mind altering, people are usually trying to fill the void in their life. And one of the dangerous things about kids, or anybody else really, is teaching them that that void can be filled with devices or pills, or, you know, there's many ills we can talk about, marijuana being one of the easiest ones to get. So part of it would be, you know, increasing the self-esteem of kids, teaching them resiliency, teaching them how to feel like a whole person, you know, despite whatever challenges they have in their lives, and not feel that they need to fill a void. A lot of times, they learn that from their parents. You know, this is multi-generational. Marijuana can be a gateway, so can tobacco, you know, a gateway into filling a void. And yes, at some point, it doesn't work so well. And so other things are sought to fill that void. And so it is, it's multifactorial. It's also, you know, teaching or encouraging providers to discourage that in patients. It's kind of, because it's become legal, not something you want to offend patients about. You don't want to ask them that much about it, but it really should be just as important as it was before. So yeah, again, multifactorial providers, especially beefing up the kids and their resiliency, I think is one of the most important things we can do.
This is a really personal subject for me, because I lost my cousin to an overdose. She was an alcoholic, and I know all too well the, the risks involved with playing around with drugs, whether it's prescription or otherwise. In preparation for homelessness awareness month, this month, I went around and I actually visited some of our local homeless shelters and talked with some of the residents there, many of whom either were or in the past had struggled with addiction, whether it was alcohol, opioids, methamphetamine. I'm just curious to know what the county is doing in regards to honest rehabilitation programs, because speaking with many individuals there, they basically told me they were, there were two options in Tuolumne County. You could either pay tens of thousands of dollars to go to a for-profit rehabilitation center like Maynard's, or you could go to jail. You commit a crime and you could go to jail. And I don't see that as being a sustainable model for anyone, youth, adults in this county. So I'm just curious, you know, are there plans to expand rehabilitation services? Because again, you know, you say they're mind altering drugs, you know, sometimes these people are not in their right minds, but every addict I talked to there that is recovering said they did have that moment of clarity to where they wanted to get clean. And I just, I see especially when it comes to like a housing, you know, first model of homelessness care, that the, the bar's never been lower, but you have to be sober. And I don't think it's fair to, to set that requirement and not have a pathway to sobriety in Tuolumne County, as far as I've been made aware. So I was hoping maybe you could elaborate on current rehabilitation services or plans to expand rehabilitation services and behavioral health in Tuolumne County.
That's a great question. And unfortunately, there are some things on the horizon, but I don't have the answer yet. So all these companies that pushed us to prescribe drugs, us being the medical professionals, now have to pay. There's been a huge lawsuit nationally. We're getting money. Tuolumne County is getting money. So how that's going to roll out is going to depend on what the board of supervisors priorities are. On the list are things like a rehabilitation center, or a sober living center. We won't have enough money for both. So we're looking at taking funds and putting them toward one of those things. I don't know how that's going to look yet, but there is a plan to get things going. On the other hand, you know, currently, we do have two clinics that do addiction care, and being on buprenorphine instead of street opioids, I can't speak to alcohol and such, it is sober living. It is sobriety. So getting people in that moment of clarity, those resources is really important. You know, if you have a loved one or what have you, RedFeatherOpioidCoalition.org has a ton of resources on there. Be ready for that moment of clarity for your loved one, because you can, even without these resources, it would be great to have more. You can get care here. Currently, there's just Maynard's and the Lakes. Maynard's is the, is the for-profit, and I don't think the Lakes is for-profit. I'm not sure. I know they take Medi-Cal. But it's not easy to get in. You know, even if you have insurance, it's not always very affordable. So yes, people, you know, it can be a driver to homelessness, because addiction, you know, basically takes over everything. But people who get on buprenorphine will start coming out of it, start getting their lives back, start getting a career back, get their family back, get their kids back, what have you. It's really rewarding to see, and it doesn't necessarily require inpatient care.
Just to follow up, do you see the county is fomenting outreach to our disenfranchised communities on how they might access some of those services?
Yeah, we're working on trying to make sure that, we have an opioid coalition going that had restarted last year, trying to get more people engaged and, and, you know, create this outreach. We're talking about getting Narcan vending machines out, you know, where it's free and what have you. There's a lot of discussion about it. You're welcome to come. Anybody is welcome to come to the Red Feather Opioid Coalition meetings and, and put in your two cents and how we can help serve our population.
When are those meetings?
It will be on the website. The next meeting is the first Thursday in February. I can't say what date that is. It'll be at noon. It'll probably be via Zoom. If you go to the website, RedFeatherOpioidCoalition.org, it will tell you how to contact and get added to the listserv so that you are aware of the next meetings.
Are you finding the medical community to be receptive to your messaging?
So far, yes. I mean, it's not easy to reach the medical community, because they are busy, 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 busy. They have a certain number of patients they need to see per day to keep their jobs, and if they, they just don't have time. They will bend over backwards if they know that there's something they can do to make patients better. And a lot of people, you know, who were trained 20 years ago, don't necessarily know that things have changed. Things have worked out well for them. They haven't had a lot of problems with their patients. So going in and talking about these other alternatives has been well received. I just have to get there.
Yeah. Well, I thought it was interesting that you suggested a local medical association, you know, formation, because it would be, it would be, you know, nice that the doctors talked to one another and, you know, knew the devastation caused by opioids.
And the success. When you're new at trying to get people off of opioids, it's a little bit, you know, if you don't know anybody, it's a little lonely. Am I doing the right thing? How is this patient going to, you know, look next week or next month, whenever their next appointment is? It was awesome when I started doing it. People would come back. Oh, gosh, my pain's no worse, doc. I'm weaning him down. But, you know, my libido's better, my function's better, my brain fog's better. And they were really motivated after that, but it was a battle at first. And so having a group of professionals who are doing this come together and say, hey, you'll get through it. You know, keep on, you know, don't, don't give up on your patients.
And was that it?
No, no, thank you.
So I had a couple of questions, two and one that especially leapt out from the data you were giving, was that while our high, overly high prescription rate was coming down, that we had that crossover with deaths going up. Is that attributed largely to the influx of fentanyl, or are there other reasons? It just seems quite shocking, and...
It is shocking, and it is largely due to fentanyl.
Yeah. Just unpredictability of the dosing and reactions, et cetera?
Well, it's also being laced into other things. People are getting meth, and they don't know there's fentanyl in it. People who got hooked on narcotics and are, you know, what we call maintenance users, they, in order to not go through withdrawal, they use every day, not because they're trying to get high, but just because they're trying to feel normal. And so they'll get, you know, whatever it is they usually use, heroin or something else, and it'll be laced with fentanyl. They know their heroin dose, they didn't know fentanyl was in it, and they're gone. It's really unfortunate. A lot of them are parents, or, you know, other people who are trying to be functional in an unfortunate situation, usually caused by being prescribed, or in a injury, or some other issue that wasn't their fault.
So then additionally, the, so to be at the top of the state for prescriptions, our medical community is, must be aware of this, and yet, it's been very slow in diminishing. Are there any rational to ordinary people explanations, or is it just partly because one has old patients who have been needing X drug for a long time, that it has been tapering very slowly?
Yeah, it's, it's a little bit of a perception, too. I mean, we have decreased the MMAs by two-thirds in 12 years, which, you know, we still have a long way to go, but it is a great improvement. It's not easy to get people off opioids and meet corporate pressures. Unfortunately, providers are pressured to see a certain number of patients per day, and it is really easy to say, how you doing, Ms. Smith? Everything's going okay? Yep, everything's going okay. Here's your prescription. It's much, much easier than saying, Ms. Smith, I really think we need to change your prescription. And, you know, obviously, that person would object and talk through it, and on and on and on.
And that takes time.
And it takes time. It's not easy. It's really fulfilling to do. I really enjoy doing it myself. But it's very difficult to get somebody to get that into their workflow, because it's a conversation. It's time. And it's time every time, until they, they come off it. Usually, the patients who are motivated for me had been kind of thrown into crisis. Some of them didn't know they were addicted, but their provider died, and I'm the person picking up the pieces. And they don't want to ever go in withdrawal again. So they're motivated to change, but they didn't know they were addicted. So, you know, I had some patients who were very motivated, and I had others that weren't. It's not easy, unfortunately.
So I think we've all absorbed the, this awful message, which begs the question, what can we as public leaders in a small way do to help with the problem? I mean, Councilwoman Merrill obviously had some interest and questions about some of the organizations, but where are we? What can we do?
It would be great for you to promote, again, funds going toward law enforcement to help keep, to be on the prevention side, keep it from coming in and apprehending the people who are selling it. So promoting that, whether that's local legislature or state legislature, I would really encourage that. If there's any way to, on informational websites or what have you, link to the opioid resources, you know, if you're in trouble, if you know somebody who is, make sure those resources are available. We're trying to make it really easy to get to that new website. If you know anybody who is potentially at risk, starting to open the conversation, say, hey, have you considered other alternatives? Think about going to MeWatt Clinic or Matheson Clinic. They can help you. You don't have to have this for the rest of your life. You don't have to be at risk. There are small windows with people to get them into recovery. And so being ready to have that conversation with anybody you know can really help.
And so then, further, I listened to an argument that everyone associated with, or even just in this public sphere, should have a Narcan dosage, or I don't even know what it looks like or how it's administered, but in their car or someplace available. Is that realistic or viable, where if people get the training, that they can actually help with the overdose condition?
Yes, it is. It's free. You know, if you go through Matheson, it's free. No questions asked. They're not asking who you are or why you might want it. It's easy to train. You can, you can Google CDPH, California Department of Public Health, Narcan Training. There's a 12-minute video. That's basically what we teach people to give Narcan. We've rolled it out in the schools this year for the first time also. So getting trained on Narcan, having Narcan available, definitely can save a life. Absolutely. Are you going to be walking over bodies on the sidewalk? No. It's not likely that that's going to happen. More likely, it'll be some place that would be a little bit more predictable. You know, somebody's house that you know is on him, and a kid got into the pills. It doesn't hurt to have that dose. It's free. It doesn't hurt to do it. So yes, having it on hand could definitely save a life.
Does the training tell you how to recognize an overdose?
Yes.
Okay. So that you don't think it's a stroke, or...
And even if it is, quite honestly, you're not going to hurt anybody.
Okay.
That's one of the best things about it. If you give it for the wrong reason, somebody's on alcohol instead, or benzos instead, something it won't work on, or having a stroke, it's not going to do anything harmful. It won't do anything to their blood pressure. It won't hurt them. It won't do anything bad. Like you, you may not fix them, but you're not going to hurt them.
So any of us who have had CPR training should at least consider the possibility of getting a dosage and having it available in where we...
I would, yes. I think that's a great idea.
Thank you. Any further questions? No?
I felt that on the way.
Specifically on marijuana, have you heard of like marijuana being laced with fentanyl in these parts? Maybe that would be a better question for Chief Turu, but I'm just curious if that's a common occurrence, because the thing that scares me is like only three grains of salt. You know, if you get like a flower of marijuana, you know, like that, that would be really hard to, to determine if it's been laced or something, and that, that is quite frankly terrifying.
I don't know for sure. The sheriff last week told me that it was being laced into everything. So I'd assume that marijuana is not off limits, but I haven't heard of a specific case.
Okay. Would that be, and again, not that I'm advocating or anything, but, you know, we have dispensaries for marijuana in Sonora that are, I would like to believe, highly regulated. If there was someone that wanted to purchase marijuana, I would imagine that that would probably be the safest place to avoid being poisoned by fentanyl in that instance.
From what I understand, they have to report, you know, percentages of THC and have things tested. So I think it is your more reliable place to get it without fentanyl in it.
So like if there was fentanyl in it, it would probably come up in the
I don't think.
spectral analysis, or whatever they do to...
It should be found, and I don't think that people who are trying to sell legitimately would want to chance that.
Yeah.
They're also, you know, the, the third-party vendors who are selling through the stores, they aren't going to benefit from getting somebody hooked, you know, directly. So the drug dealers really want to be the people coming, that people are coming back to. So... So the legal dispensaries, I don't, I don't really see that as a big risk for fentanyl.
And it just, to summarize, it really, there is no way to tell if a controlled substance, whether it was legally prescribed originally or, you know, how you procure it, procure it. There's really no way to tell if it's been laced with fentanyl.
If you get legally prescribed stuff from the pharmacies, that's gonna be okay.
Yeah.
But if you're at somebody else's house and they have a little orange pill bottle, you're not necessarily gonna know they didn't put something else in there.
Yeah, I just mean like if, if it was originally, you know, prescribed as safe, but then, you know, down the line, someone could resell it or crush it up or, yeah.
There are, you know, you may have heard of fentanyl test strips. Those are out there, but they're not very practical. They're gonna test fentanyl in a liquid. So your addict needs to crush up their pill, which destroys it. You know, they've paid for a pill they're not gonna use. That pill is not gonna be the same as the next pill. And they need to put water in it and then test with the fentanyl test strip. So it's, it's just not practical that people who are, unless they're using liquid fentanyl, which isn't as common, are gonna use that to help make sure that they're safe. There are people who use heroin who benefit from fentanyl test strips and making sure that their supply isn't laced with it. That's really the only subset that it really practically helps.
Thanks for that.
Thank you very much, Dr. Freeman.
Thanks for having me.
We appreciate your taking the time to come educate us and hopefully the rest of the community as well.
If you have any questions, feel free to email me. I'd be happy to discuss anytime.
I, I was just on the verge. I was actually reading it as you, I saw your hand go up. But yes, we're going to take public comment, but I'm going to take half a moment here and read the rules for the rest of the community who is a little less familiar with them. So, "Public comment: For non-agenda items, the public may address the council on any item of public interest not otherwise on the agenda that is within the jurisdiction of the city. No action may be taken. Matters to be addressed may be referred to the city staff or placed on a subsequent meeting agenda. Speakers are limited to a three-minute presentation. If participating via Zoom, please raise your hand using the Raise Your Hand feature or dial *9 and *6 to unmute." Please, take the floor.
My name is Sharon Maravich. I'd like to comment on the Visit Toowalami County presentation and also note that what I saw tonight is all I've seen of any of their things. So I may be totally off base. What I'd like to see is more emphasis in the Sonora section on the charm and cultural heritage of our city, where we, we literally walk in the footsteps of the pioneers. I'd like to see more streetscapes at street level, showing some of our gold rush buildings and our Victorian buildings and our architecture that's so unique and spans, spans well over 100 years. I didn't see any vintage photographs that might show people, you know, a little bit about what we evolved from. I think that Sonora could be portrayed as having a robust past, but that we can enjoy that today. The one picture that sums it up for me is the one that was the last picture in the last presentation they made. It's an aerial view of five blocks of, of modern monotone roofs that are punctuated with heating, ventilating, and air conditioning units. Please remember that heritage tourists stay longer and they spend more money. There's still gold in them narhills.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Maravich. Do we have any more public comment? Oh, goodie.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Katie Dunn, President of the Sonora Chamber of Commerce. I just want to give you an update on Christmas Town Sonora. The lighting is complete. Yay. So yes, the Red Church is all ready to go, Caulfield Park and also Courthouse Park. So we're, and thank you to Councilmember Merrill for helping out. I appreciate that. Our decorating will begin this Sunday. We're gonna be decorating the Opera Hall. It's gonna be Sunday and Monday, so our decorating teams are hitting the streets and gonna be decorating both the Opera Hall and the mayor's garden parking lot there. The fence, we're gonna put some garland and some ribbons there. We're also going to be decorating Caulfield Park and turning it into a winter wonderland. And also, on November 30th is when the Christmas trees, we have 40 nonprofits and seven Girl Scout troops that are going to be putting up their trees. So that's Wednesday following Thanksgiving. Also, on the Wednesday, I'm jumping around here. I apologize. It's all up here. But on Wednesday before Thanksgiving is our lighting ceremony, which is at 5:30 at the Fire Museum parking lot. And it's at 5:30. We will begin with a blessing from the Red Church, followed by Mayor Plummer here saying a few words, and our supervisor District One, David Goldenberg, will say a few words. We have SRT Junior that will be there singing some carols along with a cameo appearance of Buddy Elf from Elf the Musical. So it should, you know, it may last, I don't know, half an hour, 45 minutes. It's our first annual. We hope it will turn into a lasting treasure. And let's see, and the last thing that I have is that we, we will not be having a chamber mixer in November, but we're having a, a holiday community mixer on December 13th. And we're, December 13th, and we're co-hosting with Visit Toowalami County. Thank you, Lisa. And it'll be at the Armory, and that's from 5:30 to 8:00 PM. And so I hope you all can join us. We are gonna be having a raffle silent auction in the, I guess it's their tasting room, but it's a way for us to raise money for Christmas Town 2023. So if anyone wants to donate to our raffle, please get in touch with me. I'd really appreciate it. And that's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Dunn.
The lighting ceremony is Wednesday, November 23rd at 5:30 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone on Zoom who would like to speak? Okay. Not seeing any further public comment. I am going to close public comment and move on to the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine and will be voted on in one motion unless a council member or member of the public has a question or wishes to discuss an item. In that case, the item will be removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. And I have a question. I would like to just learn more about item five, so I would like to consider that separately. Any questions or any further comment from the council before I ask for public comment?
Specifically, item number five was a grant opportunity that Mayor Protem Segerstrom and myself learned about at the, as you can tell, the Integrated Regional Water Management Authority. Originally, I thought it might be a way to address our storm drains in the city. However, the, the scope of that grant and the, the things that it could be used for are pretty broad. So after consulting with our city administrator, Melissa Eads, we decided that it would be best used to help landscape Phase One of the Gold Rush multi-use path, because the initial $5 million grant for Phase One of that project served as great leverage for us to secure this landscaping grant. So I think it's kind of neat. The, the grant that we already have awarded will address the infrastructure component of that plan, all the sidewalks, the path itself, you know, any electrical or lighting components. And then this additional grant will kind of piggyback on top of that and allow us to come together as a community and decide how we would like to kind of landscape and beautify that, that project. And it should be, I, I can't remember if, if, it's a $3 million minimum award, that I'm not too specific on how that's gonna be exactly divided up amongst the participants in the IRWA. But I, I will say, I think it's just an easy slam dunk idea that didn't require much in the way of city resources. And the IRWA decided to do a lot of the paperwork and put the man-hours behind securing us that funding for the project.
Thank you for your engagement in that. One of my questions, and that's why I wanted the people most, or closest to this, to be able to speak to that, was that it was an estimated that 645,000 square feet of turf would be converted. Is, what percentage of that is? Because it sounds like the way it's described...
It's a, a number of the members of the IRWA are participating in the grant. Much of the turf is up in Groveland.
Oh, okay, so it's not, we're gonna convert all of...
And it is specific to Rotary Park, this, this particular grant. It's not a massive grant, and it's actually being, uh, speed, speed dated through. It's broken off from the other grants that they're applying for to, to see, you know, to see if we can get the, get it through and get it funded quickly. So Groveland is, is, wants to redo the turf and I believe irrigation in their parks. Sonora, that would be the Rotary Park playing field and other, and probably the, there's some extended grass there. And also irrigation could be involved. And I'm trying to remember the other, I mean, Toowalami, Toowalami has a lot of playing fields. They're, they're taking part in this. So it's a lot of different agencies that are applying in a, in a block grant.
So that figure for a little over half a million square feet is county-wide?
Yeah, it's all over the county. And then once the, once it's funded, then whatever is funded back to Sonora will be ours to implement and to accountability, and everything will fall on the city.
And would that, or the participants envision replacing the playing fields at Rotary Park or...
Well, it's, it's actually, it's, you know, the, it's to take out the Kentucky bluegrass, I think, is what is there, which is a water thirsty animal. And replace it with another ground cover that would be, that would be drought tolerant. And then if, if we don't have effective and efficient irrigation there, that would be replaced as well. So, I mean, it's, it's a, a small step, but, and this is actually the first grant the City of Sonora, as a member of IRWA, has, has participated in. And so they were very excited to have us actually do something proactive.
Thank you. Thank you for the explanation and clarification.
Yeah, so...
So obviously, I'm a little, you jumped in before we actually considered the other ones, but I will take public comment on all three items at this point. And once again, no one on Zoom? Okay, seeing no further public comment. Then if we could consider the first two items, I would love to entertain a motion.
I will move to accept the consent calendar minus item five as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposition? Nay. And no abstentions, just minus one member. So, item five.
I would like to move approving item number five as presented.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I will second. I'm very enthused.
Thank you very much. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed? Nay. Any abstentions? Please indicate. So unanimous for the current. Thank you. So public hearings. Introduced by Title Ordinance Number 887, amending Chapter 15.28, Signs of Title 15, Buildings and Construction of the Sonora Municipal Code by repealing it in its entirety and replacing it with a new Chapter 15.28, Signs, and Way of the First Reading, Rochelle Kellogg, Community Development Directors.
Thank you. I'm gonna take a little time tonight and kind of go walk you guys through this ordinance. It is a, a total rewrite of the signed ordinance, so I want to kind of walk you guys through it and answer any questions that you might have. This was city, this was staff-initiated. We've been working, Kim, who recently retired, had been implementing the sign ordinance for many years. And I've been working with it for the last 12 years. And staff saw a lot of issues with both in the implementation of it as well as the burden some to our business community in particular. And it was very hard for the public to understand, let alone your staff, over the years. They developed policies and put in place as far as how it would be implemented. But we really were to the point where we needed to look at a sign ordinance that people can understand and staff can interpret. And it's a more prescriptive, 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 sorry, in versus more subjective. So it's, it's very clear for people, much more clear for people on what they can have as well as what's prohibited or exempted from the policies than what we had in the past. As well as it also has some depictions and other things to help people better understand what's included in the sign ordinance. This sign ordinance, what the draft will do will duly replace the existing sign ordinance. So when you look at Ordinance 887, the proposed ordinance, you'll see that the first section is lined through, and that is the part that's being removed from the current, or proposed for being removed from the current Sonora Municipal Code. We did, the sign ordinance is, does not fall under zoning. It's a, it falls, it does not come under that section. It comes under the Buildings and Construction Section of the Sonora Municipal Code. It's not required to go to the Planning Commission for approval before it comes here. But we did have, use that forum or that platform at their meeting on October 11th. We had a public meeting at the Planning Commission level just to allow anybody to provide any comments or had any questions. It was informal. It was an opportunity, like I said, for us to interact with anybody that had any comments and answer Planning Commission questions as well. And so we did that on October 11th. Based on some comments that were made, staff did make a few minor changes to the ordinance, but what's before you tonight is pretty much what was presented to the Planning Commission. So let me get to the start of the new ordinance, because as I said, everything that's hashed out is being removed. It was proposed for being removed. And so when you get to page 33, that's where you actually see the meat of what we're looking at. Signs do regulate type, size, location, and construction standards. And it's done, this one's very specifically done by zoning districts to help make it easier for people to find what is required. We did add a section for minor deviations, and that's under 15.28.020. And I apologize, I did see some spacing things when I was going through, back through this. And we would, we'll fix that before the final, sorry, the final ordinance is presented. But it does provide some findings that can be made by the Community Development Director. It does allow for a minor deviation, but it's only up to 10%. But sometimes when we're going through permit processes, there might be just some little minor change that somebody needs to make, and it's helpful. We do it when we do, when we do use permits or design review or any of that. When we approve it at the Planning Commission level, there isn't, I can approve or whoever the director is at the time can approve a minor deviation. And we added that into this, so that way they don't have to go all the way back through a cumbersome process for approval if it's something minor. And then we did clarify the process for a modification or an exception to the policy if somebody wants to pursue additional signage or a change in the requirement. And that is done through Chapter 17.62, which is your use permit in variance. And that would be the process that they would go through if they wanted to look at a modification, an exception. And we use that a lot as kind of the process for... And we use that a lot as kind of the process for an exception request. It's not unusual to go through a kind of a use permit process. It provides the opportunity for the public to comment. The other thing that we added in there is when a use permit is being required for a specific use in any zone district, then we're asking for that use permit to also outline the limitations and requirement for signage pursuant to that use. And that way it makes it real clear because sometimes under a use permit, it's kind of outside of the normal use that you would have in the zoning district. And then it gets a little convoluted on what they're required for their signage. So just to make it clear, we can outline their signage requirements at that time. Most of the time they'll follow basically what would be a normal use in another zoning district is what we would look at. We actually added some definitions. Definitions help with clarity. So that people, when something was unique to the chapter or unique as far as a signage type item, we made sure that we added a definition in for it so that somebody could easily look and see what that meant as part of the discussion in the chapter. So we did add several definitions in there. And as we were reviewing it, if we saw that there was something that was questionable, then we'd have, make sure that we added a definition in there so people understood. If we didn't understand, other people aren't going to be able to understand it. So as I said, we added some figures. And to make it easier for people to really visually see what different types of signs were, we added a very clear exemptions section. And we, pretty easy for people to follow on when they would not be required to get a sign permit and what the parameters lie with that as far as that exemption. So, because, just because it's an exemption, it's a specific exemption and that doesn't mean they get to go willy nilly on their way. So we added a section for grand openings. This comes up a lot. When a new business opens, they want to have, we're open and they want to have pendants. They want to celebrate. And none of that is allowed under the current code. And so instead of fighting it every time and really feeling like the Grinch because, you know, you had a new business and you're happy they're here. And by the way, you have to take all that stuff down. We added an area where they can have certain things. They can have streamers. They can have banners. And they can be up for no longer than 30 days. And that way they have 30 days to celebrate and then we can be the Grinch. No, and then we can kind of go over that. Most of them are coming in by then to start getting their signs and then we can clarify that. The whole purpose of this is to help our business community expedite the process, make it easier for your staff to implement. And then where we have problem children, and I'll point that out as we go through, we've actually tried to add some more teeth into there to give us a little bit more ability to implement some things where we've had some issues with signage. And again, so as we go through this, we have our exemptions. If you have any questions as we go down or as, you know, after we're done, that'll be fine. The one thing that we did add is we added some stuff for garage and yard sale signs. We didn't have anything on our code, in our code before on that. So we did add some stuff on that to start kind of looking at what we can do on that. It's not so much, I mean, everybody puts them all up. The bad part is they don't always take them down, right? And so that kind of mucks it up for us. So, and then we have a couple of things in. We did add an exemption for window signs. Window signs were allowing up to 50% of the total window signage area for commercial businesses outside of the downtown historic area. They can be, have signage on 50%, up to 50%. And in the downtown, they can have signage for up to 25%. So what that means is they can automatically do that. They don't need a permit. And we'll only regulate it if they exceed that amount and we, and then they've got to take that. Now, a lot of people just want to put, we're open, put their sign, they're ours. And to have them go through a whole permit process for that, to me, is over the top. You know, as long as they only cover a certain percentage of their windows, really and truly, why would we care? And so trying to be business friendly and not so regulatory, that was an area that we felt that that was an easier thing to do for businesses. And that way they can get signage going right away and not have to wait for a permit. The other thing is A-frames do not require, they're exempt. They don't require a sign permit. But we did shrink the size of them, especially because we see them a lot downtown. So originally they could have 16 square feet. We actually limited them to 12 square feet. It originally could be five foot high. We actually are limiting it to four. So they're, because they, some times they do get carried away a little bit in the downtown with some of the sizes of those. So it kind of limits the size. It sets kind of a standard. And again, they have to keep them out of the roadway. They have to, you know, make sure they're not interfering with traffic and they have to make sure that there's ADA space for them. So we included that in there just to make sure that they know that. And then temporary signs in the, we did post, this is one of the areas where we added teeth. There's a little stack back there on that table behind Teru. We've had Public Works pulling down one of every little flyer, brochure, all the stuff that's getting blanketed our downtown. And we've been calling people and talking to people about, you just can't do that. I mean, because people are plastering downtown and you guys, I know, have seen it. Because I know I have, coming in. And so what we did is we set the requirement that those posters and flyers, we limited the size to 11 by 17. We say that they have to come down 10 days after an event. And they can't, they have to be on the inside of the window. They have to have the permission. And it does take, and they, and again, it's a coverage thing with your windows. So if you want to put people's event banners and flyers up, that's fine. But it gives you less window coverage for your own signage. So you're still limited to 25 and the 50%. But there'll no more bulletin boards. Everything can only be inside. Hopefully, no more blanketing vacant buildings with these signs and posters and everywhere else where they're sticking them. But anyway, that is a new section that we added to deal with a problem that we continue. The minute events started coming again, they popped up all over downtown. And your Public Works staff doesn't have time to do public works alone. We have to pull garbage stuff off of posts and banner, telephone poles and everything else in our downtown. As it looks. I'm sorry. So we are, I'm on page 27 of the, page 42 of the Agenda Packet. And it's item K. Window signs are O and P. Or O and then A-frame signs that I talked about is P. When you go to page 43, we get into prohibited signs. All offsites, some of this is in the code today, maybe not as clear as it is now for people. But offsite signs are not allowed in the city. That includes billboards out toward advertising structures, directional signs. So you can't be on, back on Stewart Street and have a sign on Washington Street telling people to go to your business. That's not allowed and it isn't today. Animation is not allowed. So rotating, spinning, people standing out there spinning signs, sign spinners. Those are not allowed in the city. One of the things I hate the most, feather flags, feather signs, it's just a thing with me. I just don't like them. I drive up Twalome Road and cringe. Those are not allowed. They're not allowed today. I want to clarify something for you guys right now before I go too much farther. During COVID, we backed off on the sign ordinance. Those that were on the city council knew that at the time. Because of the problems businesses were having, they were doing everything to try to keep their doors open. And the last thing they needed us to do is tell them that they couldn't have a sign that says, we're open for business. We're hiring, pick up over here. So we backed off. And I knew we were going to look at doing a new sign ordinance and there was no use to enforce stuff until we got through this process. Once we get through this process, we'll get everybody back in line. Because I know that we've got some feather flags. We've got some stuff out there. But we'll reach out to them and say, hey, you know, we need to, we've kind of stepped back, but now we need to take care of it. We'll give them 30 to 45 days to get it taken care of. And then we'll move forward from there. But, but, so you will see some of this stuff now in the city, but it'll eventually get back to where it was before. And then, again, those are prohibited signs. And one thing that's totally a hundred percent prohibited, which is a change, is there's no signs on any of the public right of way. And this includes political signs. And this is a change from what we had before because you guys had a separate policy for political signs. And if Melissa, we did get a memo from Doug about this as well. So when I wrap up mine, she probably will go into that a little bit more with you. But when we were working on the sign ordinance, ordinance in the first draft, we actually had included a policy for political signs and were advised by our council, our legal council, that they're non-commercial and everything is non-commercial is non-commercial. So they, if you're going to regulate them, we have to regulate them all the same, whether it's political or something else. And so we went with not allowing any signs in the public right of way. So just to know, that's where that came from. And like I said, Doug gave us a clarification memo and we had that for you guys tonight. And then, again, just on to the next page, it's all stuff about signs that are prohibited. And then we included a big, another figure that really shows people what we mean by prohibited signs with some diagrams and depictions. And then we go into sign area. And this is an area that our new current sign ordinance isn't very clear on. And there, and so there's just been a standard that the staff has used. But this new ordinance really explains to people how the area of their sign will be figured and what will be included and won't. And to solve some of the issues that have come up in the past. And then, again, if we're looking at like a, which we've been doing for a while now. But if you have just letters on your building and that's all, you'll see them like Safeway or even downtown, some of them, we're only going to put a rectangle around those letters. And then we'll do the smallest rectangle to get to the size. So we work with the business, but we made that in here. We made it clear to everybody that that's what we're going to look at so that they understand when they're laying out their signs, how that would work. So that they, you know, it's pretty, it's darn clear for people now. And then we broke it out by zoning districts. In your residential zones, there's not a lot of signage that's permitted. Then when you get into your commercial, there's more signage, of course. And it's established what they can have and we're going to go on that in a second. In our planned development zone, just like our use permits and that, they're going to set the standards for their signs when they do their planned development. Planned developments are specific to that use. So in a planned development zone, you might have a common area subdivision. And in that common area subdivision, it'll set what signs are going to be required. It can be a medical office condominium type project. And it'll set the standards for what those signs are as part of their zoning district. So when staff goes to implement it or future tenants want to move in, it's very clear on what they're allowed with signage for their particular project. The next section is the historic area requirements. The major thing that we did on this one is we no longer included an advisory review prior to issuing the sign permit. Again, we're trying to be very prescriptive. If you do this and that, you can get your sign permit and not so subjective. And so in the past, there's a delay for people in the downtown and one of our harder places probably to do business, to wait for comments to come back. And everybody else outside of the city, they don't, outside of the downtown, they don't have to do that. So we feel that it's a necessary step that as long as they meet the requirements for the, under the sign ordinance as adopted, when it is adopted, they shouldn't have to be burdened by that additional step just because they're in the downtown. So we did remove that. Everything else as far as non-illuminated or interior illuminated signs, neon signs, that all remains the same. They can't have it in the downtown. Plastic signage is not permitted. That's how it is today. And then we did limit it to 25% on the cumulative area, the window. That's how it is today, actually. It just now won't require a permit. And we did link on banners in the downtown. They used to be able to have a lot larger banner. We limited them to 16 square feet. We felt that's a fair size for a banner, especially in the downtown. And made it real clear that it has to relate to the business. They can't put events for something going on at the fairgrounds and they can't put on, it has to be related to their business and it's only up for the one time and for the 30 days. And then our current sign ordinance only allows two types of signs for any business. So you get a wall sign, a window sign. You can get a projecting sign, maybe not a wall sign. I mean, it's very specific on two different types of signs and they can only get two. This one's a little different in that everybody can get window signage, as we already discussed. Don't even need a permit. They can have an A-frame. Don't need a permit for that. And then on their wall signage, they can have, they get one primary wall signage for their entrance area. Our current code, if you, if your entrance is on a parking lot, if it's facing a parking lot and not a public right of way, you don't get the big wall sign. And we took that out. If that's their primary entrance, that's their primary wall, that's where they get their wall signage. Wall signage is now, is now, is totally based on the square, the size. And it can go up to 150 square feet and maximum, right now, it's 90. But it's all proportionate to how big the building is. So yeah, they can get a maximum of 150 square feet of wall signage. But if their building's not big enough, they're not going to get that. So there are signs that we've approved that look like postage stamps on these big buildings. And so making it more proportionate to the size of the building to make it look more correct is the way we set this up. And then if they can have a primary and they can have a secondary, so they can have another sign like out towards their parking lot or towards a public right of way, so they can have two wall signs. One is at their primary entrance and one is a secondary. And then it talks about how it's figured, their secondary signage can only be half the size of their primary. So they can have a maximum 150 square feet on their primary and half of that for their secondary signage for their wall signs. It goes into freestanding signs. It talks about any requirements for your freestanding signs and how many they can have as far as their front, one per frontage, which is what they can have in the current code. And then we talk about the monument signs, your freestanding signs. The size of them are going to, are set by the amount of frontage they have. And so that's broken out in the table here. They can have onsite directional signs and it talks about when and how the size of them, when it applies, directory signs are the same. Talks about banners and the size of banners. And this is so on 32 square feet outside of the downtown, 16 feet in the downtown. Projecting signs, protection signs are not, they're not approved in the same place where they have a wall sign. So if they have a wall sign, they don't get a projecting sign on that wall. But it's not to say they couldn't have a wall sign. And then if they have a parking lot or vice versa, they could possibly do a projecting sign on that as their secondary signage. And then they can have an awning and canopy signs. And then they can have the little pedestrian signs that I think are, is very unique to Sonora. I love our little hanging signs as you walk down Main Street. And then you have another figure that kind of shows everybody what in the heck those different types of signs are. And that's figure five on page 38. And that's figure five on page 38 or 53 of the packet. And then master sign programs. Master sign programs are used for shopping centers, multi-tenant type properties. And some of our shopping centers have them, some of them don't. This code now requires anybody, any of them that meet the criteria that they have to have a master sign program. It makes it easier. It's really difficult sometimes for staff to try to apply a regular sign ordinance when they have shopping centers with multiple tenants. They need to allocate so much signage because what'll end up happening is somebody will eat up all their signage. And then some little mom and pop, there's no signage left. So we want to make sure when we look at a master sign program that they're accounting for all their tenants so that everybody gets some signage. So that's important. Goes into design guidelines on 1528. And page, that's page 54 of the packet, 39 of the ordinance. And just goes into some of the basic requirements when they're looking at design and requirements. Maintenance is a biggie and you know, making sure it's designed with quality. We go into a little bit about signage for closed business and vacant sites. We've got some of this that we need to circle back and get some signs down. Then we talk a little bit about special use signs, our drive-in and drive-up uses, movie theaters, they because they always have the movie kiosks. So they're a little different. There's a section in here also for gas stations with their their caught, you know, their gasoline prices and then auto and RV sales are a little different. Then it talks about legal illegal signs and legal non-conforming signs. So illegal signs are signs that aren't legal today. And so as I talked about, those signs are going to we'll let them know they need to take them down. Legal non-conforming signs are different. Legal non-conforming signs, you guys have heard me use this term a lot and that's in the planning world. Legal non-conforming means as today it's legal. And when this ordinance gets ordinance gets adopted, it might not be allowed under the new ordinance. But it can stay there in perpetuity as long as it's maintained and stayed in, you know, as as the use that it is or the the sign is there. They ever take it down, they can't put it back up. They ever cease using it, it goes away. But as long as they keep it, they get the sign, the sign can stay there. And that's considered legal non-conforming. Then we get into a little bit on the enforcement side. We tied everything back to years ago. We updated title one and we did some code enforcement fines and penalties under 1.08. This ties it all back to that. And then there is an appeal process. And then the last thing that's included in your packet is just kind of a table to talk about the difference in the current sign ordinance and what we have in the new sign ordinance. So this was a major undertaking. We worked Derek that works with me in our office. We spent a lot, a lot of hours putting this together. And he gets a lot of the credit. He looked at a lot of different city stuff and then did a major review of our ordinance. Kim was very involved because she she knows the issues that she's dealt with over the years with our existing ordinance. And so there was a lot of times sign ordinances aren't popular. On the fact that this room's not packed, I think your staff probably did a good job. Because really, again, the focus of this was to make it easier for the public and businesses. And and I think we've achieved that. So there you go.
Thank you very much, Rochelle. I after reading through it, I understand why Kim retired. Because it's quite in-depth. Are there any council questions for staff?
Really, just to comment to kind of echo Mayor Plummer's sentiments that this is an incredible amount of work. And I personally believe in leaving things better than you found them. And I think you and Kim and everyone involved in rewriting this ordinance really deserves a lot of credit in that. Just because again, regardless of your personal opinions on, you know, what signs should and shouldn't be, this is really easy to understand. You know, just looking through the fact that there's clearly illustrated, you know, examples of everything, you should all be applauded. And I really appreciate the time and effort you put into to doing this.
It was one of the last things I wanted to do before I got out of here because I knew nobody else would ever take it on.
Okay, so yeah, 12 years, you said you went through this whole thing. That's a long time. And a lot of it is blight. We don't hear that term very often anymore. And then when you see a lot of signs or something called sign blindness that you don't see anything anymore because there's so many signs. And what I'm particularly thrilled about is getting rid of those ginormous political signs. Everyone's like bigger and better. And you know, the citizenry really needs to read what each candidate is about and be influenced that way rather than driving by a huge sign. So this is a lot to read. But can you elaborate a little bit? I know on private property, people can put what they want. But I would like to see something no larger than a two by three political sign. And again, could you elaborate on what that's going to look like in future elections?
So if you look at, everything's done by zone. So if you look, we kind of already do that or we do do that. If you look at, let me find it here. Even on private property on residential, in the residential and commercial zones, it tells you how many you can have and how big they can be. And so
This be 15.28.07 on page 46 of the packet?
Right.
Page 31 of the ordinance itself.
So in the AR zone, which is our large parcel zone, our agricultural zone, they can have up to 60 square feet of signage. But that's also because they can have ag uses and ag business type stuff. So they they were giving more signage in that zone because you could have a business there. And so we wanted to give them more signage so that they if they had an ag-related business, they could actually have a sign to reflect that. But when you get into your R1 and your R2.
Tell me what page you're on again.
I'm sorry, page 31.
Thank you.
So they can have subdivisions. Oh, you know what? I'm in the wrong thing.
31 is our extout.
Yeah, wait, wait, wait. Let me get to exempt signs. It's going to fall under what's exempt. And they're non, it's called non-commercial. Let me find it. Right, here you go. So if you look on page 27 of the sign ordinance, which is 42 in the packet and it under number in letter number in or letter in, not letter number in. And it's non-commercial signage. So this is where your legal, your signs for anything that's not related to a business fall. So when you get to your your tourist in administrative zone, I'm on six, your residential zones, which is R1, R2 and R3, they can have up to two signs, each sign not exceeding three square feet in area and four feet in height. So if they're going to put political signs out in their front yard, they're limited to two and they can't be larger than three square feet in the residential districts. They can have a bigger one in the AR and the RE. And again, those those properties are a lot bigger in nature. And they can have six feet, square feet, and that's under number seven. And then in your general commercial, because they can still have political signs and stuff there, they're limited to 16 square feet, six feet in height. And no more than one sign every 100 feet, 100 linear feet of property. So if they've got 100 foot frontage, they can have one sign.
That's still too big for me.
So that that's currently what's allowed for non-commercial.
What do you mean by allowed? Like what the previous one said? The previous outline?
The previous outline, you mean the current code?
You said, yeah.
That we have right now.
You said it's currently allowed.
It's not restricted.
Did you guys discuss reducing those sizes at all?
Actually, right now they can have anything. So we reduced it to the 16 square feet and the three square feet for the on the residential. Because our residential neighborhoods, we always look at more residential neighborhoods, so smaller signage. And we allowed for bigger signs in the commercial area.
Right, yeah.
And 16 square feet is what we've been using for pretty much for banners and anything else in our commercial. We were trying to stay consistent because it gets confusing when staff has a whole bunch of different sizes to deal with.
Right, thank you.
So my support for Measure Y sign would be too big and would be disallowed on
Three square feet is what you get.
Is very tiny.
Yeah, three square feet in the residential.
Well,
Good thing that ordinance will go.
A little bit.
The ordinance doesn't go into effect for 30 days, so you're safe. Could you define a public right of way, please?
Public, so it's any public property. So anything that's owned by any public property includes the streets, the parks, the parking lots, any public property. Right of way is just strictly where the roads are or area that could be part of the roads. But it's any public property.
I was also curious, just in terms of the downtown area. You were talking about illuminated signs inside. I mean, a lot of them have the open sign. Is that not?
So if they hang a sign that's not attached to the window, it's not a sign, it's a display. So anything that's not attached to the window is a display.
Okay, thank you.
That doesn't mean it can move though. Because that becomes another issue. That's a safety issue. So or that's more of a public safety issue versus a sign issue. They don't want signs that rotate and move and distract drivers as they're driving down the road from paying attention to where they're going. And so that's why those are in there.
Well, thank you very much for this comprehensive document.
And forgive me if, forgive me if this is answered, but just to throw out a hypothetical situation, if I were a business owner on Washington Street and I wanted to support a particular political candidate, how would I go about doing that? Is that allowed or I just I?
Inside your window.
Just so I don't have to, you know, like search through all this immediately to find the answer. Just do you know that off the?
They can have a sign and they would have it inside their window unless or they could have it on their balcony. But they and they'd have to meet the sign requirements and they and they can get up to 16 square feet for non-commercial. But they they couldn't like stick it right in the middle of the city sidewalk. Or because then once you cross that threshold, you're in public property. So really, they're either their sign, their window, balconies, something like that.
Okay.
And with the
Just trying to figure out with the square.
In that scenario, would the 25% and 50% total signage apply?
Yeah, but they they could, if they didn't attach it to the window, it could be a display. We don't regulate displays. That's that's illegal to regulate displays, just to let you know. The county found out the hard way.
You've been letting me know a lot of things today.
I have. We can't regulate unless they're unless Teru's there because they're offensive. We don't, we don't regulate displays.
And so with my careful reading of this, I do not have a fence at this point. But both of my neighbors do. It sure seemed like they were not, they were forbidden to put any signs on their fences, even though it was private property in the residential. Is that a correct reading?
Fences are in the resident, for the non-commercial, they can have them on the fence.
Okay, so if I put up a fence, I can still put up pleasant
For non-commercial.
Uh, political signs.
Yeah, but no cities, no city fences, no city railings.
Than six square feet.
Now, commercial property, those, that doesn't apply. So commercial signage cannot be on railings or fences.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions for staff?
I just really think it's going to change the dynamic of, you know, political signs in the city, you know, at a lot of those right of ways. And at first I was kind of, you know, how are people gonna gonna know who to vote for? But then I thought, you know, that actually could go in a really positive way, I think, to where instead of you just have a candidate that goes around putting signs all over public property, you actually, as a candidate, have to go and talk with the people that you want to represent and ask, hey, can I put a sign in your business? Or hey, can I put a sign on your on your front, your lawn? And I think, you know, just the moment I thought about it like that, it it I think that could be a really positive thing for politics going forward in in the city of Sonora personally. You know, we talk all the time about the need for grassroots movements, the need for more community building. And what better way than to actually go and talk to someone that you want to vote for you and to get their support by displaying a sign? So at first I was like seriously against it, but I I think it could be a really valuable thing going forward. And I'm I'm not opposed to that at all.
Thank you.
Isn't it great to have a broad variety of positions and opinions? So
Everybody has one.
Yes. So that will come up in a moment after public comment again.
So my big thing is you just, the political signs for years, we've dealt with a policy for that the city had. So this is going to be new because it is a change from what people have done in the past. But one thing, I'm really hoping that political signs aside, that we can clean up some of the trashiness that ha, you know, we're making a blanket statement. You can't put your signs out there because people just, they multiply, they throw other signs up there. And our public works guys run around and trying to have to clean everything up. And they have better things to do. The city looks nice without, I mean, if you think it, you have over signs for businesses, you take that and then you see everything plastered all over our downtown. So with all the events and everything.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Rochelle.
So do we have any public comment? I rather expect that we do. Let us start with Zoom. And do we have any public comment from Zoom? Why is nobody interested in this topic? It is. So please, let's bring public comment back to the chambers. And if you would share with us, I look forward to it. Yes, please. I didn't mean to have you up and down and up and down. That was unintentional.
My name is Sharon Maravich and I'm representing the Twomey Heritage Committee. We too appreciate the extraordinary efforts of staff to prepare this for you. However, we do have some comments that we'd like to register. First of all, we are not in favor of increasing the maximum size of wall signs by 60% from 90 square feet to 150 square feet. Signs approaching billboard size do not belong in the historic district. And it we are living in the 21st century now and we have increased reliance on electrical, excuse me, electronic devices for finding places. And so the signs don't need to be any bigger and there's been no one asked for it. Secondly, eliminating advisory agency comments. Signs used to be approved by the Planning Commission. The city changed that to staff discretion with the agency notification. Now, in the exact opposite of transparency and welcoming public opinion, the decisions would be made solely with staff with the idea that comments from organizations like the Twomey Heritage Committee are too cumbersome or are taking up time and delays the process. I thought it worked very well. I'd like to cite three examples of past actions that could and should have had citizen input but did not. One is the daybreak demolition by backhoe of two of Twomey County's most historic gold rush buildings, those that had stood for almost 100 years in today's Lion Street parking lot. The city did that. Item two, the clear cutting of the pistachio trees that brought shade and natural beauty to the facade of the city's parking garage next door. There is a public process for such occasions, but it was not followed. And the third thing is the changeable message sign that was placed on City Hall, which is a natural, excuse me, National Register eligible building. Not only was there no public input, but the action itself was illegal according to your ordinance. I rest my case for continuing the process of robust public opinion. If you have time, if you have problems with the time, cut the appeal period back to five days. And the final one would be the changeable message signs. They can't be put on buildings, but there's nothing restricting them from being in windows so people can see them. They don't belong in the historic district. So we ask you to use the power and the influence that you have to continue your good stewardship of Sonora's cultural heritage, its ambience and its appeal to visitors.
Thank you very much, Ms. Maravich. Any other further comments? Any other further comment? I recognize a citizen and business owner who struggled with signage when I first met you.
Yes. Hi, my name's Derek Nunes. I own PhoneSmart in downtown Sonora. As Mayor Plummer stated, I did struggle several years ago when I opened my business. The biggest holdup for that was the advisory committee. Even lowering the time from ten to five days doesn't change that their input delayed me months. And it was, to be fair, unreasonable. Beyond unreasonable, one of their requests that I wanted perforated window shades so I could get some shade was that I should just put up window shades and keep those down. That doesn't really say business is open. But on top of that, after I made adjustments to my signs to accommodate this and then put my window shades halfway down, they complained that my window shades were down and filling in the signage. I, I think these new sign laws, they're probably not perfect for everyone. I would love to see more than twenty-five percent for historic, but I think there's some really good thought processes in here, like being able to apply for a higher percentage if needed. Not every business is the same. If we can get around a hard number and say, hey, my storefront's small, I got small windows, I need a little more than twenty-five percent, I think that's fantastic. And I really appreciate all the work that Rochelle's done on this. And I hope you all will consider it today and vote yes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nunes.
Derek, what was the name of your business?
PhoneSmart.
Not seeing any further public comment. I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to the city council. And I have one comment that I want to bring up, and that is that I support this and like the clarity of, of positioning it so that everybody knows what's involved and how to just go forward, get started, and make it as simple and painless as possible. That said, there was one issue that bothered me somewhat, and that is the political signage, which I find to be sort of a, an incumbent protection ordinance, because incumbents find it quite easy to go talk to people. They've been in office and know a lot of the businesses, a lot of, they have far more opportunities to put signs out than somebody just starting new who is less familiar to the community. So that's mostly, I think, item J. Is that correct, Rochelle? That's, so my request is that we approve this as it is, but bring that back, ask staff to bring this back for discussion, because I think that for a thirty, forty day window where we would allow political signs, and we can't limit any other signs, but that around the election and then within a week after the election, everything has to be removed. No signs are permitted. That would not be permitted otherwise. I'm being as unclear as I was with Rochelle from the way you're rolling your eyes.
Well, the signs are permitted, but they have to be on private property.
Yes. Well, I would like to see that permitted on public corners, for example, as we do it now. And we have further information that I have yet to see from our city attorney, which is why I think bringing this particular aspect back for further discussion. And I might be the lone wolf on this issue after hearing some of the current comments, but I'd like to see it discussed. So that is my position, and I support this. Otherwise, just, I think that's, that's dear to my heart. Any further comment from, or?
I had a question about Sharon was talking about an increase to a hundred and fifty square feet from a smaller size. Does anybody know where that's referenced? What section?
Currently ninety is the, Rochelle is coming up here.
Is that, is that within the historic district? Or not?
I was looking at table four on page fifty-one, but I'm not sure that's the relevant section.
Current maximum wall signage anywhere in the city right now is ninety square feet. And so we increased it to a hundred and fifty, but keep in mind, it's tied to the size of the building. So your bigger buildings get more signage. And it's based on so much, get you there?
So the storage unit on Stewart Street, for example, could conceivably have a big sign.
Right, but your smaller downtown's gonna have a lesser sign. So they get, uh, that's for, two, two, two. It is an example. So fifty square, a fifty foot frontage length, time they get fifty square foot a sign. So if they have fifty feet across the front of their building, they're gonna get fifty square feet. So they never are gonna get to the hundred and fifty maximum. So if you have a hundred linear foot of frontage, which is gonna be rare in your downtown, they're gonna be tied to a hundred square feet maximum. If you get to a hundred and fifty linear feet, you're gonna get to a hundred and fifty maximum, but it's bilinear, it's one square foot per linear feet. So most of your frontages along Washington Street are fifty feet or less.
Okay, thank you. And another quick question. Where do murals fit in all this?
Murals are a different beast, unless it's a sign. So there's two, a mural is a mural if it's not a sign. So a mural mean, so like the brewery has the, the things down there, we have flowers on the flower shop. Those are murals because it doesn't have the name of their business. It's not like a sign. It's not like a logo or a sign. If it's a sign, it falls under this and they just are tied to the same wall frontage. You have signs that are painted directly on the building. They just have to follow what's in the, how much they get, how big it can be.
Like the thirsty prospector.
Right. It's just tied to that. If it's a mural, it goes through design review and it's approved by the planning commission.
Thank you. That being said, the size of the building's probably not going to be that large because our buildings aren't that big.
The frontage on our downtown businesses are not that big. And if it was a really big business building, then they should have a bigger sign.
Like lower save mark, for example.
Well, Sonora Lumber is a prime example.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then I would say that I agree with this whole thing, but I disagree with the mayor about the political signs. So those are my, those are my two cents.
Exactly.
Next person.
So, and I would especially like to thank staff for having taken a considerable amount of time since I was absent on fires and just returned. They brought me up to date and clarified a number of issues that I was tormented by. Isn't that a great word? And, and also discussing just what I would like to see as a political season carve, temporary carve out. And so I am persuaded that in the interest of our businesses, some of whom are waiting for clarification on this, that we should just pass it and deal with quibbles that I have later and not put it off. But with that, I would like to entertain a motion if there are any.
I'll make a motion to accept it as written.
I will second.
Thank you very much. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? No, it passes unanimously, Madam Clerk.
I would also like to say, though, that in the future, should we want to resume public comment on signs, that that can be written back into an ordinance or the ordinance can be amended?
Yes, we can. And that's, and this is why I say, and if somebody wants to bring it up, if the council wants to bring it up, we can deal with that when we come back. So, but with that, I believe staff is seeing an interest in bringing, at least as a discussion item, the political signage issue. Is, or am I the only one?
No, you, you raise a really good point, just the incumbency aspect of things and like having those connections built in, you know, that is worthy of considering, no doubt. However, you know, maybe I'm speaking from my own personal experience, you know, when I decided to run, I ran because I felt I had pre-existing connections with the community as is. Granted, I've met a lot more in my time in office, just, you know, the last four or five months or so. So your point definitely is taken. But I, I'd like to think that the people that are invested in running in the first place might already have, you know, that, that foot in the door, so to speak. But?
This is why I'd like to bring it back, because see, on that issue, I'd contend that somebody who grew up here is in a completely different ballpark as somebody who came in as an adult post, post-high school.
Yeah, but I mean, political signs are also expensive. And I, you know, I don't know, it's if, if you're, you know, well, I'm just speaking for running for city council. If you're on a shoestring budget, it kind of levels the playing field. So, so I think it is an item for discussion.
Okay, thank you. That is clear then?
So you are waiving the first reading. You'd like us to bring back the second reading, but more of an informed discussion on the exception for?
This as, as, as a, as a different, as a separate discussion item, I want to see us pass this as is and then bring back my concerns. We have nearly two years in which to consider it. And if anybody else sees it the way I do, to pass it. So we have lots of time at this point, but I would like to see this passed for, in the interest of businesses waiting for us to clarify their sign questions.
Very good. And I do have an attorney-client privilege work product from legal counsel on this issue, so I would be happy to share that with each of you.
Yep, thank you. So. Wow, new business communications. Green Waste Disposal Day is an event, is, am I on? Is an event established to provide city of Sonora residents an opportunity to clear their property of hazardous vegetation and dispose of it at the Calciara Earth Resource Facility for a nominal fee and aids in creating an important fire-safe dispensable space. Did I say that right? Fire-safe defensible space while improving the aesthetics of the city neighborhoods. Is this, Chief New?
Thank you. Chief New is here to provide an update on this event. Staff wanted to just make it available to the council and members of the public so that they were aware.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, and members of the public. So each spring and fall, the Snore Fire Department coordinates with our Green Waste Disposal Days with Calciara Disposal. And the fall days have arrived. We have our first rain and a chance to set those green waste disposal days. So the first one is gonna be Saturday, November nineteenth, and then the second one is December third, Saturday, December third. We wanted to preface, we get a lot of phone calls from people. This is for city residents only at this time. I know the county is working on a green waste project as well, but we have coupons available online at City Hall, at the fire station, and residents can take their grass clippings, leaves, pine needles, flowers, tree trimmings, brush, and any dead plants to the facility. They don't accept any trash or trash bags, any ashes, any liquids, or any hazardous waste, no metal items, pet waste, or tree stumps, or palm trees. So there's a little bit more information on the flyers. That's also on the website and available at City Hall and at the fire station. And we just hope everyone takes advantage of this. Normally, the pickup loads, I think, are between twenty and twenty-five dollars, and you get to drop that off for a dollar. So it's a really good deal for our residents. I know not everyone has a pickup truck to where they can take their green waste. So we're hoping that some of our firewise communities that have been created in the city, neighbors can help neighbors. And if you've got people that have piles and they don't have a way of getting it there, maybe they can help each other out. But we wanted to make sure everyone knew about these two days coming up. So I'd be happy to answer any other questions you guys might have.
What, what's the website? I'm sorry.
On the city's website.
On the city's website.
On the city's website, we have green waste posted and the coupons, correct, with the flyer with the information.
Okay, thanks.
Yep, absolutely.
And just a suggestion to anyone that's listening, because I don't own a pickup truck, but I do deal with a lot of yard waste. It's amazing if you have like a SUV or something, what you can haul if you get a couple of tarps and, you know, every, every so bit, you pile some yard waste in there, try to, you know, really condense it down. You'd, you'd be amazed what you could fit in a car if you wrap it properly, so. Just a suggestion.
Are plastic bags allowed if one has put them in a car and then empties them there?
Yes, yes. They just don't take the plastic bags. It has to be dumped out. It's by, the bio-waste only.
Thank you very much. Chief New?
Okay, city website for coupons.
And then we also had the Twomey Heritage Committee Electric Vehicle Charging Stations letter, and I see that Ms. Maravich has left the building.
No additional information to provide the council. Just wanted to make you aware of the letter.
Okay. And it is interesting and pertinent. So. Chief New, have you any further communications? Well, I just, ladies first here, and Rochelle has spent half the evening standing, so I thought I'd let her.
Give her a break for a second. I just wanted to let the council and the public know that the fire department was contacted by Walmart to put in for a grant, and it was a no-match grant locally here by our Walmart, and we did receive it for twenty-five hundred dollars, and that is going to help pay for our radios for the new equipment we should be getting with the CDBG grant. So that was really wonderful that they reached out to us, and it was a great award. So we want to thank them publicly. Thank you, Walmart. Also, this past Saturday was the hundred and sixty-second annual firefighters' ball. We had it at the Opera Hall. So success, another one in the books. Thank you for those that could attend. I wanted to give two special thank yous, and I know I'm gonna not pronounce this gentleman, him and his wife's last name, so bear with me if someone knows how to pronounce it, but it's spelled B-R-E-A-U-X. Is it Bros? Okay. So Mr. and Mrs. Bro actually smelled the smoker cooking outside of the Opera Hall, and they live up off a church street, and walked down to see what was going on, because it smelled so good, and ended up buying two tickets that we had available because I had a late cancellation, and attended the ball and found out that we were raising money to restore the nineteen fifty-three GMC that was damaged in the Washington Fire and donated five hundred dollars. Wrote us a check that night. So I just wanted to say a special thank you to them. And also Darren Dues, who is the, I call him the Batman, who you guys all know, he also came by the station and donated five hundred dollars. So those were two really big donations, and I appreciate everyone who attended, all of our businesses that donated for our raffle. So I don't have a total of what we raised for, for the GMC yet. We're still getting those final numbers in, but it was a great event. We had a great luau and just wanted to thank everybody. So, yes, sir.
So somebody shared with me that that is the longest continuously running California event.
I don't know about California, but I can attest that in Twomey County, it is the longest-running continuous event. So, and I plan on keeping it going. Also, one other announcement, Twomey Calaveras Ranger Unit did lift the burning suspension, so it is now legal to burn as of last Friday. I want to remind our residents in the city of Sonora, we do require burn permits. They're twenty dollars. We do come out and inspect the area. That's what that twenty dollars covers. It does not cover the cost of, of going out there, but it at least gives us something for going out and making sure where your burning is safe. So, so if you do want to burn on permissive burn days in the city of Sonora, please contact the fire department to get your burn permit.
Good to know. Thank you very much. Community, Rochelle Kellogg. Have you further, wow, are we ever blessed this evening?
We can get some things done while we're waiting, but it is a long walk. Good exercise. So Christmas parade right around the corner, believe it or not. It's shocking, actually. Parade entries are due on the sixteenth. They're coming in daily. We're getting them in. We have the, the radio station is gonna do our announcing stands again this year. We have our locations identified. Santa and Mrs. Claus are on board. We've got them all squared away. Amy's got the fire truck ready to go for Santa and Mrs. Claus to come at the end of the parade. Mike and the guys are out putting up banners. The Rees will be going up. They'll be getting Santa's house ready at Courthouse Park, as well as all the other things to get ready for the holidays and for the events going on. So that is all going on at the staff level. We, I know that PD is really busy getting ready to get it all orchestrated, because of course they do all of because, of course, they do all of the, street work coordinate, all the street closures and, um, the safety issues and all of that related to the event. And so it's all starting to come together. Um, I wanted to let you know that, um, they're finally reviewing our CDBG grants. Uh, Laura, or that Lori did, yeah, that Lori did, and submitted for Amy on the three fire-related CDBG grants. They've been up there for how many months, I mean, months. So we're finally getting comments back and Lori's working with staff to address those, and we're getting everything back up to them. Um, creek, uh, vegetation removal. Um, so, we finally found a contractor that gave us an estimate, we're working on them. Um, we're looking at probably only ma- probably doing a portion of the creeks this year. Um, based on the estimates, uh, we'll be looking at going out with an RFP. Hopefully, um, that'll be another lasting thing I can do on my way out, is having some type of a three-year agreement or something. But there's no more probation crews, there's no more MA crews, there's no more baseline, there's no more cow-fire crews available to the city. All of those are gone. Um, and, um, CCC is not respond, did not respond. Um, and the last time they did, their costs were enormous. Um, so we're down to, uh, other contractors that Mike reached out to, um, weren't interested. They don't have the manpower, but we did find one, I met with them last week. And hopefully they're gonna get it back to us and we'll be able to at least get a section done. Uh, Mike identified a priority section and a secondary section, and how fast they can move through will depend on how far we can go. Um, but it is pricey and, um, it's, um, it's not like the old days. So I just wanted to let you know, we're working on it. Um, we just, it has been slow and go because we just haven't been found a lot of people interested in participating with, even have, getting paid to do it. Um, so, but we think we might have somebody, we, um, think we might have somebody lined up to do the work, so. Okay. Yeah, we're starting with the residential area and then working towards Safeway. Um, and then trying, they'll try to get as far down as they can with the, you know, yeah, okay.
Thank you very much, Rochelle. Mr. Gorski, is anything from, there is from financial services? You know, we could get seating for you guys a little closer to the front of the room.
It's a long walk. Um, just a reminder, tomorrow is election day, and the city does have Measure Y on the ballot. Uh, one percent sales tax increase, and it's very important that we get out the vote. Um, the city does not have the resources to do things like roads, sidewalks, public works, you know, the, the, the city does need resources, and, and if you vote for that, that would certainly help the city.
Thank you very, thank you very much, Mr. Gorski. Chief Endewell, anything from our police department, esteemed police department? Esteemed, highly esteemed.
Just wanted to make a, one quick note, a follow-up to Dr. Freeman's presentation. Is it since May of this year, um, our officers have, uh, twenty, twenty opioid reversals. So Narcan deployments since May. So if that helps put those numbers in perspective that she was sharing and the dangers that we do have in our community, it is here, um, the rainbow fentanyl, it is here, we've seen it. So it's, it's, um, impacting all of us, and hopefully the efforts of Dr. Freeman and her, and her partners are, are gonna make some positive change there. Um, on a positive note, I'm not being lazy tonight. I have facial hair and I'm hoping, Councilmember Merrill will join me in, in growing, uh, facial hair for men's health and, and what you think you can, uh, we'll have a competition to see who can, but, uh,
I did trim just this, uh, this morning.
Okay.
Believe it, but, uh, yeah, I'll, I'll be sure to avoid all that.
All right, fair enough, but, uh, the, uh, so our, our sworn officers have, have been given a, um, exception to our policy to grow facial hair during the month of November to raise awareness for men's health and, and cancer. And we are partnering with the Dana J. White, um, Cancer Center here, uh, for the campaign, so you'll probably see more on that coming up. So I urge you all to participate. Mr. Mayor?
I'll try my best.
Thank you very much for that gracious invitation to look like I'm eighty, but.
All right, that's all I have.
Thank you, chief.
Nothing from me, Mayor.
Wow, and do we have our attorney online?
We do not, he was not available to join us this evening.
Great. Uh, city clerk, anything from our esteemed clerk?
Nothing from me, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Cruz?
Yeah, uh, Rotary, Sunrise Rotary delivered forty-five loads of wood to senior citizens. So that's what I was busy over the weekends doing. There's something called the Field of Honor, which is new this year, uh, not new for Rotary, but new to Tuolumne County. If you have anybody that is in the military or has served in the military, you can go to www dot healingfield dot org and purchase a flag. They're going to have two hundred and fifty flags on standard field starting tomorrow, and it'll stay there, um, till Saturday. So if you'd like to, uh, buy a flag and dedicate it to somebody in the military or veteran, that would be awesome. Uh, finally, I would like to remind local residents to take a bite out of crime. And the language of crime is trash and vandalism, so, um, I'm pretty much on top of that as well. So I'd just like to say thank you to people who've made an effort to do that. And, um, I think he already said, vote by tomorrow, that's it, thanks.
Councilman Merrill?
Uh, I think we already went over the big, uh, development at the Integrated Regional Water Management Authority, uh, item five on the consent calendar. Uh, pretty excited about that, to be able to bring some, uh, potential to beautify our, uh, approved Gold Rush project. Um, also, I, I just wanted to, to say, um, after having visited some of our local homeless shelters, um, this last month, that, uh, if, if you are, uh, unsheltered or know someone who is, uh, we do have beds available to get out of the cold if you, if that's something that you need. Um, the, the shelter I went to at three fifty-nine South Washington Street, uh, is managed by Chris Neves. I wish I had his number on me right now, but, um, there are available beds. And if you're cold and need a roof over your head, I would, uh, highly recommend going and checking out that facility.
What a timely message, thank you. Um, Mayor Pro Tim Sagerstrom?
Um, I would just like to, um, extend the, the T-Stan Irwin, um, grant possibilities um, to include our, um, um, clearance of our, of Sonora Creek. There's urban relief grants that, um, through the Department of, uh, Water Resources that I think that we can take advantage of, uh, as we get to know more about how, uh, the grant program works with the water systems. And, um, I know it would be a great relief for everyone not to have to, to pay for, to have our, to have our creeks, uh, cleaned, but to have grant money to, to do that. Uh, I did participate in a, a presentation for Measure Y on the radio. That was a really interesting, um, uh, opportunity, and, uh, it gave me a new insight. It always does when people are able to talk about, um, what's going on in government and what the government needs are. So I appreciate, um, being able to do that. And, um, uh, Christmas Town Sonora, lighting ceremony on eleven twenty-three, and we'll be making the town merry between now and then. So that's it from me.
Thank you very much. So I want to thank you also for having filled in for me for that radio interview. And I, well, as I expressed to Ms. Eads, that I had full faith and confidence in you and to you too, and I thank you very much for doing that. Thank you, Councilman Merrill, for having filled in for me on the Access Tuolumne Board. And I know it was, but, but, uh, it's still, I, I appreciate what all of you have done in my absence. And while I was able to make some meetings, being present is far more important. Of course, since we're, we have to make a living too, that's part of it. And thank you to the staff for everything that has been going well and that the city is all in one piece, unburned and, or largely unburned. And we encourage everyone to vote and vote enthusiastically and make your voice heard. Thank you very much. With that, I adjourn the meeting.